You know, who are on wheelchairs and on crotches. And, you know, it just makes, you know...
Montgomery will present Montgomery College President Dr. Hercules Pinckney with the 2010 Sandy Spring Bank Outstanding Leader Award on June 10. Dr. Pinckney was chosen for his work in stabilizing the college and moving it forward. Summer sessions begin soon at Montgomery College. Check out the schedule of classes and register online 24 hours a day, or you can also register in person at one of MC's three campuses. And online registration for fall semester classes is also underway. Register early for best selection. And if you're attending Montgomery College this fall, then plan to come to the Parents' Student Night on May 4th at the Theater Arts Arena on the Rockville campus. Learn about the enrollment process, financial aid, scholarships, student services, and more. That's it for this edition of Montgomery College News and Notes. For more information about your community's college, visit our website at montgomerycollege.edu.
First meeting of Tacoma Park City Council order. Will court please call the roll?
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
She's here via phone.
Councilmember Robinson.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Snapper.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
And just in case anybody didn't catch that, Councilmember Clay is here. She is not in town this evening, but she's here at the meeting via the phone. The first thing we're going to do is council comments, and I'd like to start with three quick ones. The first one is that I attended the inaugural opening of the new auditorium on Friday night, which was a wonderful event. It was a short film about Tacoma Park, former Tacoma Park resident and music great John Fahey, a great guitarist. And that was followed by a musical performance by one of his cohorts, and then a question and answer with him. I think it was a packed house. There were about 15 standees. Everybody really enjoyed the space. It went from having some of the worst sound in the area to some of the best. And there's a continuation of events in the inaugural week and a half of events. And the second event is this evening, and it's going to start at 8 o'clock. And what I'd like to do is call a quick adjournment of about five minutes for the, to give the council an opportunity just to go over and welcome folks at the beginning of that event. So whatever we're doing at right around 8 o'clock, somebody's going to come in the room and give us the high sign, and we'll take a quick adjournment and come right back to what we were doing. So if anybody is speaking at 8 o'clock, don't be surprised if all of a sudden I'm going, "Hey, hang on time." I also wanted to mention that one of the Tacoma Park residents who was responsible, partly responsible for getting the sound to be so good in that room, has opened a new business in town, and I attended the opening of that business on Saturday. And that is Air Show, and they're at 7014 C West Marlin Avenue. It's a great facility. They, I think, are nationally known organization. They provide recording, mastering, and mixing for CDs and various artists who do some really great work all over the country. They're Whammy and Grammy winners, and that'll be just one more business in Old Town that will bring some attention and some good business and lots of people to Old Town. So we look forward to continuing the trend of some really interesting businesses opening in Old Town. Do other council members have comments? Councilmember Wright, and welcome back from your sojourn, joining our meetings via telephone the last two weeks.
Thank you. Thank you. It's much more enjoyable to be here with everybody in person and see faces, and we have a wonderful crowd here today. I'm sure we're going to hear some spirited testimony from our residents, in particular our young residents. Two things. One, I wanted to let people know that our state delegation has pressured State Highway Authority to actually replace the paddles on Philadelphia at the crosswalk in front of the library after a fair bit of back and forth, but Senator Jamie Raskin, Delegate Heather Mazur, Delegate Sheila Hickson, Delegate Tom Hucker all put pressure on the State Highway Authority, and they saw that they couldn't really leave that situation as is because of the high volume of kids that traverse that crosswalk. I did, there was some comment that the, you know, the paddles get broken, or they don't last that long, you know, they cost $300 or $400 to put in each time. I suggested we could have a more permanent, nicer solution, like a raised crosswalk or blinking lights embedded into the roadway, but that was a little too inventive, I think, for State Highway, so they couldn't quite manage that. So we'll be back to the paddles. It will take a little while. It'll probably happen in the summer is the indication that I got. The second is a question, actually. I've noticed when I've been walking to the Piney Branch Pool with my daughter, I guess it was before my injury, that the, when you walk by the front of the entrance to the lower parking garage, there are steel plates over there now, and it raises concern for me because there's a whole system, I believe, that inflates in the event of a storm, massive storm, and to prevent stormwater. And it seems to me that that system's not operating, or I can't imagine that it would operate with the steel plates over it. So I don't know what our status is on getting that repaired or what the situation is. I don't know if the city manager has any information off the top of her head, or if not, could report back to us next week.
I'll probably need to check with the Public Works Director, Councilmember Wright. The plate, I think, was broken during the blizzards and all the repeated, you know, vehicle traffic. I'll check with their own much now.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you. Two things I want to mention. I was pleased to attend a few days ago a going-away party for Gretchen Hilberger, who has been an employee of the city, particularly, specifically the Police Department. She and her colleague Mary Kendall have been running the SeaSafe program, which runs out of offices up there at 7676 New Hampshire Avenue, working to manage crime recidivism in that area under a state program. And she had a going-away party. She's leaving this position. And what I wanted to point out was a huge turnout of residents from not only the city side of that Tacoma Langley area, but also from the other side, on the other side of University, of grateful residents who have been the beneficiary of so much of the good work that the SeaSafe program has done, which we're all regrettably sorry to see it end. The other thing that I want to mention was that I have invited today a woman who was the owner of the Expo E-Mart, and this woman is, who's going to speak during the public comment period, is Suzanne DeLeon. She is the owner of the Expo E-Mart. You may be wondering, for those of you who don't live on that side of the city of Tacoma Park, what it is I'm talking about. You will know, of course, that the Safeway moved, vacated its property, perhaps about a year ago, or less, probably last summer, suddenly and without much forewarning, much to the dismay of residents in that area who've seen, saw it pretty much as a moderately-priced grocery store that was within walking distance. And we found out that then that Safeway had subleased the space to a new grocery store tenant, and we didn't know what that was going to be, the residents in that area. And last fall, before the store opened up, everybody in my area was pretty discouraged, thinking, "Well, what's this going to be? And it's probably not going to be as nice as the Safeway," or, you know, offer the same kind of services that we're used to. Well, I'm here to tell you that we are delighted to find out that the new grocery store, which has taken over all the space that Safeway had leased there, has opened up a remarkable grocery store. I know that because I've been in there many times shopping. It is far better than the Safeway that was there. This store is extremely clean. It has fabulous produce, an amazing seafood market, the likes of which you're not going to find. I can't think of any store in the immediate area which offers seafood in the abundance that this store does, and, believe it or not, at remarkably low prices. So, and that's because this is a store that's not part of a chain, and they can, they simply can afford to offer lower prices because they don't have all the overhead. So that's all I'm going to say for now. I'm going to, when the public comment period comes along, Ms. DeLeon is going to have her opportunity to tell you a little bit about herself and her plans for the store, and I will leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say I've heard from a number of residents of Ward 5 who were discussing the budget. It was a surprise. It's not usually a topic of conversation, but people have heard that there are, the council is considering budget cuts, perhaps substantial budget cuts, perhaps layoffs, perhaps tax increases, and the residents were very concerned about those, and I had lots of variation of opinion, but one thing they did say, and I thoroughly agree with this, is that most people find the staff of Tacoma Park, the city of Tacoma Park, to be really excellent, that in addition, it has gotten better in the last few years, noticeably better. Those people who've been around a long time talk about that. And I just wanted to pass on to the staff that city residents notice and are very appreciative.
Any other comments? Okay, then.
I'm sorry. I thought Dan had his hand up. I just, real quick, wanted to remind the residents of Ritchie, Osleego, and Geneva Avenue that this coming week, our recycling day is changing as part of our cost savings measures, and so the recycling would pick up on your regular trash day. Thank you.
Okay. We'll move along. The next item is additional agenda items. There are none, and the agenda scheduling update. I just want to point out a few quick things. A reminder that next Monday night, May 17th, is Ward 4 Night, and the timing is a little bit different than usual. The reception with Ward 4 residents will start at 6:30 in the atrium, and following that, we'll start the council meeting a half hour early at 7 o'clock. And then we have an additional item that we publicized and are putting into the agenda next week, and we've advertised that we'll have a second Constant Yield Tax Rate hearing, and we've advertised that for 8:15 PM, so that there will be an opportunity for Ward 4 residents to both meet out in the, informally out in the atrium at 6:30, and then at the beginning of the council meeting at 7:00, and then we'll move into the formal part of the meeting right at 8:15. And for that more formal part of the meeting, we're scheduled to have first reading of the various tax and budget ordinances, with second reading the following week, Monday, May 24th. That following Monday, May 24th, is scheduled to be the first meeting of the council in the newly remodeled auditorium, and that schedule is for a reception and walkthrough of the auditorium in the Green Roof from 7:00 to 7:45, and then having a little bit of a recognition in the auditorium at the beginning of the meeting, particularly for some of our funders for that room. And another item on the agenda that evening, the work session agenda item after the second reading of all the various budget ordinances, is the discussion of the Task Force on Environmental Action Report. So they have finished their report, and they'll be here to talk with us about that. At this point, we're tentatively not scheduled to have a meeting on June 1st, which is the Tuesday after Memorial Day, so that the meeting following the May 24th meeting would be Monday, June 7th. And that meeting, we have single reading ordinance awarding a contract for the renovation of the public works facility, a discussion regarding the community bans use of facilities. Is that right? Okay. And the Tacoma Junction Task Force and the policies and procedures for use of the auditorium. And then just one final note on upcoming agendas. On Monday, June 21st, that is Ward 1 Night. That is last but not least of the wards in the city having ward nights, and then we'll see about starting the cycle all over again. So with that, we will move on to the next agenda item, which is public comment period. So if anybody would like to make any comments, if you, people aren't usually quite that quick to jump up. And so if you'd please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you.
My name is Gene Herman. I live at 511 New York Avenue, and I am speaking early in support of your resolution renaming of Jackie Park in honor of Belle Ziegler. Belle was a true community treasure. She devoted her energy to the citizens of Tacoma Park in many ways. One of her greatest pleasures was to initiate and foster programs for the children of Tacoma Park. So it is appropriate and fitting to recognize her many contributions to the city by naming a park in her honor, a park that is constantly bustling with so many of the city's children. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Pat Lovelace, 7621 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park. I'd like to, I'd like to thank Terry Siemens for putting out the notices on Ward 4 Night and for getting people aware of what's going on. And if anyone's listening tonight from Ward 4, I want them to tell all their friends and neighbors to get out there on this important night, because it's their chance of anything going on in our community to show up in large numbers here, and we can show the riffraff that they won't tolerate in Ward 4. They won't be tolerated anywhere in Tacoma Park. And I think that's very important. If we have any issues, to come on out and discuss them, and if we don't have any issues, come on out and listen to the people who do have issues. Also, I'd like to let people know that we had a wonderful demonstration Saturday for Mother's Day down on Fourth and Pennsylvania Avenue. You know, we had a lot of good speakers down there, and we had, Roseanne Barr was down there. I got a hug and a kiss from Roseanne, by the way. And she used to run that show called Roseanne. She used to be on Sun after midnight on the old channels at midnight anyway. And I just wanted to let you know about that. And I'd like to also let people know that whenever we do have demonstrations, we've got to get the numbers out there, because if we don't, if we think we're safe now with Obama in office and Bush out, we still got two wars going on, we still got that oil spill going on, we still got environmental damages going on, and not too much being done about it. And when we have demonstrations, we don't have anybody coming out to do anything. We're getting very small numbers. So either people are starting to support the war, which I know damn well they're not, or they're just too apathetic to come out, and I think it's the latter. Everybody seems to think we've got Obama in office, Bush is out, all the work is done. Well, all the work is not done, and that's a very dangerous attitude to have, because like I said, we still got two wars going on, we still got more terrorism going on, we still got more people being sent off to war, and mothers don't like to see their kids killed on Mother's Days, by the way. And I'd like to see it, people to come out in large numbers to be, to do their civic duty, to come out and protest the war and protest the violence. Also, I'd like to say, welcome back, Josh, from your shoulder operations and everything. I'm glad to see you're back and healing up fine. Thank you very much for letting me share.
Thank you.
Good evening. Erwin Mack, Executive Director, Tacoma Langley Crossroads. When Councilmember Schultz gave me the word that a special person was coming tonight, I couldn't keep from coming to have the opportunity of introducing her. He's already done a good job of that. But I'm going to defer more of my time to Suzanne DeLeon, the owner of Expo E-Mart. I also have been in there and was impressed with the display of unique items that we weren't normally seeing in a Safeway, and to say that it's as clean as a whistle, as we used to say in the old days, and we're glad to see that one of the largest produce stores in the city of Tacoma Park is now in the former Safeway. If you don't believe it, come and see it. Suzanne DeLeon.
Thank you very much, Mayor Williams, Councilmember. Thank you for giving this opportunity to introduce my store. My name is Suzanne DeLeon, and I'm the owner of Expo, which is exposition of international food, American and international food, in 40,000 square feet of very nice, clean, and crisp atmosphere, where we can offer more than 30 variety of fish, seafood, and fresh, live, and frozen, and also very large selection of meat department and produce, which is from different areas of the world. This is going to be very exciting. We're going to be bringing different chefs from different countries to come and demonstrate different kinds of how to make the food, so we can bring in Tacoma Park, which is a very diverse and nice location, the diversity of the foods that we can prepare and buy in our store. So we wanted the store be for Tacoma Park people, and we are very much dedicated to the community, to bring what they want. We listen to their advice and what they want to have, and if they need something that we don't have it, we will bring it for them, and we have that opportunity to bring it directly to them, to make it affordable, very reasonable, and a very, very fresh products in every area of the. We have a very nice employees that can help everybody pick up the different type of foods that they want to buy. If a client comes and wants to make some sort of a shopping that they're not accustomed to international, we will help them. We have staff members that they can teach them how to pick up things and make kind of a type of a food which will be good for the American palate. And so please come and see us. This is a business for Tacoma Park. We have 55 employee. We have police officers that are helping us keep the place safe and nice, and they're always there and in a very nice and clean atmosphere. Again, I want to thank Councilmember Schultz for being so kind and introducing our store so nicely and giving me this opportunity. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, and I have to say that I had heard about your selection of fish before this evening. I heard from friends who are great cooks that that was the source for fish in the Washington area. So congratulations, and we're glad to have you here.
My name is Margot Bach, and I'm a 4th grader at Piney Branch Elementary School and the Young Activist Club. We are here to thank you for your support and for passing the resolution last June to ban the use of polystyrene trays in our cafeteria at school. Now we are asking you for more help.
Hello, my name is Keira Gu. I'm from Piney Branch Elementary School. I'm in 4th grade, and I'm in the Young Activist Club. We are here to ask you to ban city funds for buying styrofoam food service ware. I have, I have a suggested copy of the resolution.
Hello, my name is Leo Blaine, and I'm a 3rd grader at Piney Branch Elementary. The resolution we want you to pass is called Concerning Polystyrene Food Service Ware. And to make it easier for you, we have modeled it after one concerning single-use water bottles.
Hi, my name is Vivian Bauer. I'm a 5th grader at Piney Branch Elementary School and a member of the Young Activist Club. Our resolution asks for two things, that the city and city facilities ban funds for purchasing polystyrene resin code number six food service ware, and that individuals and people at Tacoma Park do the same thing.
Hello, my name is Lakaya, and I'm a 3rd grader at Piney Branch Elementary School and a member of the Young Activist. If you pass this resolution, you will join about two dozen communities in the United States that have restricted use of polystyrene for serving food. Most of these cities, communities are on the West Coast. Tacoma Park will be the first community in the mid-Atlantic region, and the only second one on the East Coast.
We still hope to get our dishwasher out of school. In the meantime, the city can help protect the community by modeling good practice.
Hi, my name is Kate Chisholm, and I'm a 4th grader at Piney Branch Elementary School and a member of the Young Activist Club. Please pass this resolution and help spread the word as why polystyrene number six resin code is bad for the environment and our public health, and why it is important to move toward alternatives.
Hi, I'm Anna Brooks, and I'm in 3rd grade from, in the Young Activist Club, too. And I would like to say thank you for your support, and I, we also have a thank you poster that I'd like to present to the mayor later on. And we'd also like to thank Councilmember Colleen Clay for presenting our resolution, our June resolution. And we'd also like to thank Josh Wright for meeting with the club. And we thank you for your support again, and we think, and we know that we can continue to count on it. So also, I have the thank you poster for Mr. Williams.
It's a very nice poster. We really appreciate your presence here and your present. And we would be happy to take up the resolution, the draft resolution that you've given us. And I know that school will be over in June. Yay! And so we would like to act before school is over, so we will put it on our meeting agenda for June 7th. And if you'd like to come back that evening, we'll be happy to take it up. And I'm assuming we'll pass it, and that'll give you an opportunity to get this passed and get some closure on at least part of your issues. I know that you have bigger issues that you want to have go forward, but we'd be happy to help you in whatever way we can to move your issues forward. We really appreciate the fact that all of you are young activists, and it's very obvious that you're very well organized and very passionate about what you believe in here, and we're happy to have you here, and we look forward to seeing you again in a couple of weeks. Thank you. And if I can just, let's see, maybe we can do the last two folks, and then we can do our quick little run across the hall.
Good evening. How are you all doing? My name is Balla Sally. I'm a Tacoma Park resident, first-year student at Montgomery College. I'm just here on behalf of Mr. John Webster, who works at the Tacoma Park Recreation Department on New Hampshire Avenue, just here to say a few words of thank you for some of the new programs he's brought to us, like the job training program and some of the martial arts programs that he's, the new programs that he's brought for us. I was in his job program, and through this program, I was able to get a summer, a paid summer internship. They taught me how to act in a professional manner, how to write resumes, and new things like this. I haven't seen programs like these around the area, like the Recreation Center, until recently, till Mr. John Webster came. So I just say... So I just say, like to say a few words of thank you, and that's all I have to say today. Thank you for your attention.
Good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is April Kissel, and I'm Ward Four, and I live at 111 Lee Avenue, 102. I also want to thank someone associated with Tacoma Park City Government, and I'm glad that Chief Kuchi is here. This is actually belated, but the timing is good, since I have a police week to do it. In January, I had who I thought was a missing relative, and I was advised to go down to my local police department and try to file a missing persons report. And Sergeant Tyrone Collington walked me through some issues, helped me communicate with her home police department. And he was just very compassionate, very patient with me, extended a lot of warmth to me. And it was, I was very anxious about the situation. I didn't know if this was worth the city's time. I didn't really know how to act. And just that he was so kind about it and gave me so much dignity and helped me think about it just really set my mind at ease. And he really kind of projected good, he helped me feel a lot of trust toward Tacoma Park Police. If I ever have a problem, I won't hesitate to go back. And so it was just really great, and it was very an outstanding moment for him and for the department, and I really, I really thank him.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much. We really appreciate that. Sure, sure. Welcome back to a former colleague, Roland Dawes.
Yes.
It's good to see you here.
Look at him. Councilman Roland Dawes.
Welcome back.
I'm certainly glad to be here this afternoon, and I want to say good evening to the manager, the mayor, and the councilman. How are you all doing? And I've been doing very well. Only thing, bro, don't ask and don't tell. Anything, anything that I will remember that I learned as being the councilman is don't let nobody know that you're a Republican. Because Tacoma Park will never let you live it down. After seven years...
But you wouldn't know anything about that.
After 75 years, I would think everybody would have been Republicans. That can be one. A Republican is a hard thing to be, to be true, as I have been 81 years as a Republican, a businessman, never been incarcerated, as being a black man. I think I did one of what I am. I'm glad my dad was a Republican. Whatever he did, I always followed, and I've been very successful. And I want to thank you all for letting me say that. And one little thing I want to tell you that came over the phone around 7 o'clock. Someone called and said, they was medics, and they was in the neighborhood. Would I like for them to stop by? Well, you know, I don't listen to no network or whatever it is. I didn't get the good understanding of before I hung up. But then there's something going on, whatever it is, that everybody should know about it. For somebody asked him something like that, you know, it could be to follow, asked by me being an old man, they were probably wanting to know my social security number and this and that, your phone number, and you know, is it right, and this and that and the other, trying to get the scoop on you. Well, like I say, being a Republican pays off. Thank you.
Good to see you. And I think at this point, we will just take a quick break and go across the hall and But I think we're all back now. So we'll resume our meeting, and we're at the city manager's comments.
I was just going to note through the record that the annual report of the FASAD Advisory Board is included in the agenda packet. As the council may note, there were several items that the FASAD Advisory Board recommended that the city undertake, and council may wish to schedule a work session at some point to discuss those matters.
Thank you for the report. It looks like there are some things that we will schedule. We'll then move to our regular meeting agenda, which, and the first item on that is a resolution renaming Jackie Park in honor of Belle Ziegler. Would somebody like to...
I'd like to move the resolution.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Seaman, seconded by Councilmember Wright. Are there any comments? Councilmember Wright.
I'm very supportive of this effort. I do have one question, which is what notification did we do to the residents who live in the meeting area to Jackie Park? Were there signs posted in the park? Did we put it in the city newsletter?
There were not signs posted in the park. There was, we did put a notice in the city newsletter on the webpage and circulated it through the SNI, but I have to say, we did not, we did not post signs in the park.
Okay. I thought that was something we had agreed to do. Okay. Thank you.
If I can just make a suggestion that kind of ties with Councilmember Wright's question. I was thinking that we might change the very end of the resolution, the second clause in the, in the resolve, where at the very end it says that there'd be a plaque with the explanation of the transition of the name, and as it's drafted, it says "From Jackie Park to Belle Ziegler Park." And I thought that since we have the information that it started out as North Tacoma Park, then Washington Park, then Jackie Park, and now Belle Ziegler Park, that we make sure that we change that so that it says "Explanation of the Transition of the Name Over Time." And that way, it'll incorporate all of those, and people will understand that this used to be all of those various parks. Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say how glad that I am that we are honoring Belle Ziegler in this way. She was a longtime volunteer and then worker in the city, and then back to volunteer. And she just worked hard throughout her work here with the city, especially within the recreation area, to reach out to the young children and get them involved in whatever was their, kind of their hot thing that they liked to do. She would encourage them to help her to develop a program so that they could get their friends involved, too. And I think it's great that we're honoring her in this way.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'll be very brief and say I also am very glad that we're honoring Belle by naming Jackie Park in her honor. She was a Ward Three resident, not just a couple blocks from where I live, and was always very supportive of anything that was wholesome, progressive, and fun.
So do the, does the mover and seconder take that as a friendly amendment? My language changed at the end?
Yes.
Okay. And if I can also just mention that I think it's appropriate, since Belle and her family were very involved with the whole, what is it, Sister City, that whole process, and I believe her daughter went and lived in Jackie, Brazil, and so that there are a lot of ties that make it very appropriate that that name change take place. Is there any public comment on this resolution?
Colleen, back with this?
Yeah, my name's Pat Lovless, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Ward Four. I also support changing the name to Belle Ziegler Park. And also support the change, listing the different names and how it has changed over the years. But mainly, I think it's very, very fitting that we are changing it during the same week that we had Mother's Day, considering she was probably a substitute mother for many, many, many children and many, many residents of Tacoma Park over the many, many years she has served our city. And I think it's such a fitting honor to have it done during the Mother's Day week, which Mother's Day was yesterday, and today's the first meeting afterward. I think it's a very, very fitting time. And I hope all the mothers have had a good Mother's Day, including Joyce Siemens. Hope you had a good Mother's Day, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this resolution? Councilmember Clay, I forgot to ask if you had any comment.
You can add that. I'll take it.
Okay. So I think we can vote on this. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And we will have a formal rededication of the park when the signage is up and ready, and we will let people know when that's, when that's going to be. We will move to the next item, which is a second reading ordinance enacting technical amendments to the Stormwater Management Code. Does the city manager or the Public Works Director want to say anything about this?
The only one thing that I wanted to add, which is also in the cover sheet, is the state has received our revised copy, and they've already notified us that they approved of the changes. So we're ready to go. As soon as this goes to second reading, it'll become effective. And all the ayes are dotted in teaser graphic.
Good.
I'll move the ordinance. Second.
Moved by Councilmember Wright, seconded by Councilmember Snipper. Any council comments? Any public comment on this second reading ordinance? Seeing none, it's the second reading. Will the court please call the roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright?
Aye.
Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper?
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. The next item is a resolution providing for appointments to the Washington Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee. We have these appointments before, so would somebody like to move the resolution?
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Snipper, seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Are there any council comments on these appointments? This is the extension of the Land Use Committee for, I believe, three years?
Three years.
So these are appointments for the three years, and if it needs to be renewed, it will be. Is there any public comment on this resolution? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Cast unanimously. We will now move on to our budget work session, and I will just start it by reminding everybody that it's a very fluid situation this year, given the additional possibility of some fairly large cuts coming fairly late in the process from the county. We're still hopeful that we can get part or all of those reversed. There's a meeting of the county council tomorrow to discuss this, and a number of us are going to be there for that discussion. But we still need to forge ahead and attempt to come up with a budget to vote on next week at first reading. I know that the city manager has put before us a couple of cuts that we haven't seen before, some that had been requested by members of the council. Maybe if you would like to just go through those fairly quickly, so we know what those are. And I know that I have some colleagues who have some additional thoughts, but if we can start with those, and then we'll move on to other items. And a reminder that this is our only other item for this evening, so we'll try and stay here and work through this and get as far along as we can.
So you'd like me to go through the most recent memo?
Yes, just the, basically, the piece that kind of sums it all up, and then we'll find out if there are any particular questions about any of those items, and then go on to other pieces as well.
Sure. As the mayor indicated, I think we have a very big piece of the puzzle that's sort of outstanding at this point, which is the municipal tax duplication payments. The city, as the council is aware, has contacted several members of the county council with a specific proposal. If that is accepted by a majority of the county council and makes it through the rest of their budget process, that would translate into an additional revenue loss for the city of approximately $50,000 if we are unsuccessful at that. And the worst-case scenario is that the county executive's proposal rules the day, and that would mean an additional revenue loss of $600,000. So obviously, we've got kind of the yin and the yang of what might happen over the next few weeks. What I have done in the memo that's included in your packet dated May 7th is try to at least throw out some thoughts that the council may wish to consider. My assumption is that your direction on these items may somewhat depend on the outcome of the county council's discussion regarding tax duplication payments. So what I was hoping to get from you all tonight is at least going through this list, those that you at least might be open to in some way, or if there are items that you would just reject outright for whatever reason, that would be important for me to know as well. And then after we get through and narrow the field to those items that you would be open to considering, it would help to get some sense of prioritization. Obviously, what will happen tomorrow is we'll get at least a better sense from the county council of what the outcome of the tax duplication situation may be. But I'm going to need to have some at least preliminary direction from the council tonight in order to even put together first reading ordinances for next week and to prepare a proposed budget for the public hearing. One of the things that staff is recommending to the council, at least for your consideration, is perhaps some increase in user fees. There has been some discussion of this last week relative to the Recreation Department. I didn't repeat the information that you were given in last week's agenda packet, but in a nutshell, staff is recommending that there be an increase in certain user fees for recreation services. Those would include a modest increase in facility rental charges, as well as imposing a more significant charge for use of the fields that are under the city's control. And as the council may recall from last week's discussion with the Recreation Committee, both the staff and the committee were recommending an increase in the registration fee for the winter basketball league. If the council accepts those recommendations, that would in total generate an additional $32,000 in operating revenues for the city. The staff also took a look at the current structure for use of the city's parking meters. What we are recommending is that basically the minimum amount that would be charged is just a quarter, as opposed to the current nickel and dime. So the charge would still be 25 cents for 30 minutes. That is still considerably lower than you might see in Silver Spring or in Rockville. Little bit hard to guess at how much that would generate, but our best assumption at this point would be $15,000. So if the council were to accept these recommendations in both the recreation area as well as the use of parking meters, my estimate is that it would generate about another $47,000 in general fund operating revenues.
Councilmember Wright.
I know we're not voting on this tonight, but it would be helpful to have a little more specifics about the, you know, what increases would be in the field permits and the facility rental and winter basketball program, only because I know particularly for the field permits, like the soccer league is run on a financial model that assumes a very low fee. And I just, I think we, I'd want to know what that change would be, because we'd need to consult the soccer league pretty quickly, I think, on that.
Mayor, if I might, and I think the recreation staff is here, so if I misspeak, they could correct me. I think for most... I think for most of the actual facility rentals, it was about $5 an hour. Is that correct? In terms of the hourly rental fee. In terms of the use of the fields, we were recommending a $5 per head fee for each season or camp or a flat rate per year, at least some type of revenue generation. I think we can leave that model open, but I think the staff's sense is that those fields are predominantly used by those leagues, and yet the city is paying 100% of the cost of actually maintaining those fields. So I think we can certainly talk to them before next week and get a sense. I think our general point is that they should be contributing something for the use of the fields.
Great. And if I can just point out that this is a work session, so technically, we're not voting, but to the extent that we can straw vote on what goes into the package, anything we can do this week is going to make it much easier next week and whatever we have to do in the following weeks, given the fluidity of the situation.
Yeah, and I don't know, Mayor, if you think this would be appropriate, but I guess as we go along, if there is at least a general sense that you would outright reject any of these notions, that would be helpful just to know, so I can just take it off the table in terms of any amendments we make going forward.
So maybe we'll just say right now, in terms of the user fees, maybe just a quick sense, a quick sense of where folks are, how many people think that is something that we need to include and want to go in that direction? Councilmember Clay? Are you there? Well, in the meantime, we have a majority of the council that wants to include those.
Okay. The council may re-
She's, yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
As the council may recall, from the discussion of the non-departmental budgetary unit, there was a contingency factor that was included in that aspect of the budget.
If I can just interrupt for a second, and I want to see which memo you're working off of, so I'm looking pages.
It is the next to the last, it's right before the tax increase chart.
Okay, so it's the last-
Possible modification.
The last May 7 memo.
Possible modification, yes.
Thanks.
There was a contingency factor that's included in the non-departmental budgetary unit. Part of this, as the council is aware, has to do with any increases the city receives in health, dental, and vision insurance. Probably the big unknown, as far as the contingency factor, is what we put in place for unemployment claims. There are certain of the larger departmental budgets, such as Public Works, where we actually include something in Darrell's budget for unemployment claims. But as far as the rest of the city, we just sort of put a plug figure in. A lot of unknowns regarding that. Obviously, it will depend with any employee who is drawing unemployment on this city as the base and employer, how long he or she stays unemployed. There certainly has been a lot of federal intervention in unemployment claims, you know, through stimulus funding in terms of extending joblessness benefits, so we kind of took our best shot. My suggestion to the council, given the uncertainty of that and given the city's financial circumstances, is that that contingency factor be reduced, with the understanding that obviously, if unemployment claims are filed against the city, they do need to be paid. And my suggestion would be that we just tap the general contingency account that we are obligated by the charter to budget for. So I would feel reasonably comfortable reducing non-departmental personnel costs by $50,000, just with that understanding.
Any questions on that one? Councilmember Schultz.
I give a call. $50,000 from the current amount of-
There was a general contingency factor, Councilmember Schultz said, included unemployment claims, any increases in health, dental, and vision insurance. I think there was also the charge for the city's employee assistance program, so it was just sort of one plug figure. I believe it was, if I may look it up for you at the break, it's not ringing a bell at the top of my head.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay. I guess, is there any concern about going in that direction?
Everybody think that's good?
Okay.
Councilmember Clay?
Actually, here, city manager, Darryl Wilding.
She can't hear me.
She can't hear you. Councilmember Clay, we're going through the last memo in the agenda item, and that was just the reducing the non-departmental by $50,000, because we've got a refinement of the various insurance and unemployment claims.
Yeah, I have the agenda and stuff on the screen, so I can ask you a few questions. I did thank you for that.
Okay, so it sounds like it's unanimous on that.
Okay, thank you. And I'll try to pick up the pace, I know the evening's moving forward. This would be a very small change, but obviously, we have in the non-departmental account, continued financial support for the Independence Day Committee. As the council may recall, we had bumped that number up considerably in the current fiscal year, because they were going through sort of some restructuring. The current year budget includes $17,000, and the council did approve a grant agreement at last week's meeting. I did include in the FY11 proposed budget, $12,000, which is obviously still a substantial increase above the historical level of $8,250. Just wanted to see if there was any interest in the council of, you know, reducing that back to what it had been historically, or just leave it alone at $12,000.
This would have packed the parade and fireworks this year, or?
It would be 2011.
So not-
Not this calendar year.
Not this calendar year.
Right. We were actually getting a check cut for them this week for the 2010 festivities.
Councilmember Snipper.
I support keeping it at the $12,000 level, myself.
As do I.
I'd stay.
I agree.
Yes. Robert, have you talked to the Independence Day Committee about the possibility of having less than $12,000 from us?
No, I have not. The primary purpose, I believe, that they use the funding for is fireworks. You know, I think anyone who's ever done any work with fireworks, it literally is a case of bang for the buck, so you can control the display, depending on how much money you have. But no, I have not had the opportunity to talk to them, just given the short timeframe that we were working with them.
Councilmember Clay, we're talking about the Fourth of July Independence Day Committee, and there has been at least four, maybe five colleagues up here who want to leave it at the proposed $12,000 level. You got an opinion?
Well, I think, President, I think it's on the words wording, just one, you know, we have this jazz and folk, and the folk festival, and we need to report that whole council, specifically, and then we're figuring out what we need to do this year. Oh, next, so they have time to do, they have time to do some fundraising and planning, as I had mentioned before, and they, the park, the festival.
We're having some difficulties, and we kind of lost you at the end there, but it sounds like you're saying you're supportive of the city manager's recommendation?
No. Oh, she is.
She is.
Okay.
So it sounds like there is a majority of the council who wants to not change that figure from the proposed $12,000.
And one thing I would probably just clarify, is not all of these are necessary recommendations. I was really trying to give the council some options to consider as we try to work through the situation. As the council is aware, the proposed budget that I submitted to you, continued leaf vacuum services, but reduced the program from seven weeks to five weeks. One of the options the council could consider is eliminating that service altogether. There are two components of this in the proposed budget. The operating costs are $49,500, and there is also the purchase of a new leaf vacuum machine for $18,000. So if the council were to just eliminate the city's involvement in this program, the savings for FY11 would be $67,500. One of the things I noted in the memo to the council is, at least from my perspective, leaf vacuum services are not a core governmental service. There are certainly plenty of private sector options if someone wants to get leaf vacuum services.
Councilmember Wright.
In that number, did you factor in that, because we still do our normal pickup, right? So you might have a vast increase in terms of bagged leaf pickup that would be required. Is that, did you factor the cost that might, we would have as a result of that into doing away with leaf vacuum? Because I know for me, what I would do is I would put it all in bags, and it would be at the curb instead of the leaf vacuum.
In terms of actual dollar figures, we haven't added any additional costs. It's sort of hard to know what to expect, since it hasn't been done before. We will have that program available. Our staff is on a task system, so they work, and after eight hours, they get overtime. So it's potential that overtime could be kicked in, but we don't know at this point. But they'll be providing that Monday service through those weeks, at any rate.
How about the mulch process?
That would all remain the same. We assume that we would be getting it in bags versus vacuum collection. We deliver it to the Public Works facility. We'll put it through the grinder. We still have it available. So we don't anticipate much of reduction in what we actually chip and-
Would the bags go through the grinder, too?
They do now. Yep.
Councilmember Clay, you have any thoughts on this one? On the leaf collection?
I have a, Jerry?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I have a mixed opinion on this one. Yes, I'm afraid that, I'm afraid-
Oops.
I'm afraid to go forward with it, because I think it's a, it's a convenience for a lot of folks. And I have spent a lot of time talking to my constituents about it, but my general sense is that they really appreciate the leaf vacuuming service. And I guess I'd rather try this year, going back to any of this one pickup or shortening it, rather than eliminating it, but I could still be convinced that other people have some compelling arguments. Depending on, you know, our budget and-
Yeah, just to follow up on Councilmember Clay's comments, if the council has any interest in just shortening it below five weeks, I think Darrell was kind enough to do some calculations, and the cost ends up being about $9,900 a week.
I'll just say I'm comfortable leaving it as it was proposed in the city manager's budget, reducing from seven to five.
Yes, same here.
Likewise.
Same.
Sounds like we have fairly unanimous. Was that a request for a comment, or was that a agreeing?
I just wanted to say, comment, I just agree that it is, you know, leaf collection's not what you would call a core service. But I think for many people in Tacoma Park, they would probably say, well, intellectually or factually, it's not, but in reality, for a tree city, where mountains of leaves accumulate, that in many ways, it is a core service. I think it's one of the justifications for keeping our sanitation division as opposed to abandoning it, which we talked about. So yeah, I'd be kind of inclined to go along with the rest of the council on this one and sort of keep it in the way it is.
Sounds like we have pretty unanimous agreement on this one.
I would just add also, I think it would be politically tough, because it is a service that the county provides, and even though there's lots of aspects related to the tax duplication and people paying waste service charge in the county versus through the property taxes, I think it's just one that would politically be very hard to explain to people. They would be saying basically that, like, well, the county gets it, why don't we get it? Why wouldn't we get this?
Okay, so we have agreement on that one.
Well, I think some of the comments you just made may give me the answer on the next point, but I did feel that sort of, there's some rather small items, and then there's more major structural changes outlined in this memo. Council had talked very early this year about the possibility of having city residents receive sanitation service under the county contract. One of the concerns the council stated at that time was concern about the fact that sanitation served as a second shift for snow removal. And I think there was some concern, I think both on the staff's part at that time, as well as the council's, about how any kind of contractual arrangement might work. Currently, we had the opportunity, if you want to call it that, to see how contractual services might work, and we actually, as the council is aware, relied very heavily on them during the February blizzard. So I did, in anticipation of this meeting, contact the county just to see where they were at in their bid process for sanitation. That is still an option if the council wants to revisit its prior decision in this matter, and just at least felt obligated, given some of the circumstances we may or may not be facing, to bring this before you once again and see if your direction is still the same.
Councilmember Wright.
It's just a little hard, because we don't have a number. I'm inclined to keep the sanitation workers, because of the great job they did, and I think would do in event of additional snow emergencies, better than contractual. It's just hard to judge, because I know you can't really give us a number on what we would save at this point.
No, the county has not yet awarded a contract. I think probably the most the council could do this evening is to give me some sense, if it's something you're even interested in exploring, I can keep in touch with the county sanitation division as that process goes forward. I don't think that will be resolved prior to the adoption of the FY11 budget. I think part of what I'm trying to do is just get a sense if I should even continue tracking that process through the county. But if there's no interest in it still, that's fine, and we'll just close the door on that altogether.
Councilmember Snipper.
Yeah, I have no interest in pursuing this option.
Councilmember Siemens.
I likewise have no interest, and it's something we looked at very closely several years ago, and I think for the reasons we found then that we wouldn't be interested, I don't anticipate that we would be interested at this point.
Councilmember Schultz.
I concur with Councilman Snipper, Councilman Siemens.
As do I. Councilmember Clay, we got six up here. You want to make it seven?
Yeah, I'll make it seven, and I'll throw in that while contractors got rid of the snow, or maybe they moved it up on the sidewalk, they were really hard on our thurts and tethers and in some ways, the trees. And so I would support keeping our existing sanitation crew and snow removal model right now.
Another item that the Public Works Director had suggested might be worth exploring once again, I think it would be something that would not likely be in place before you need to adopt the budget, but, and Darrell can certainly address this a little bit more, is there may be some efficiencies from her perspective to be gained by perhaps privatizing our custodial services, obviously pending any issuance of a request for bids. We have no idea what that would look like. But once again, I think Darrell and I had talked about it and wanted to see if the council at least had any inclination for staff to issue a request for bids and just give some additional information. Darrell, is there anything else you want to add?
I'll start comments on this one. I believe Councilmember Siemens was probably on the council, as was I, when the council investigated this a number of years ago. And we thought maybe we would go there, and the answer came back essentially that the cost savings would essentially come from contracted personnel who would have lesser benefits, things like not health insurance provided, and that's where the savings would come from, and we didn't want to go there, and I still don't want to go there.
Yeah, one difference between, that was obviously predated my tenure with the city, one policy difference between whenever that occurred and now, is obviously, the city council has adopted a living wage law, and in the absence of providing health insurance, there have to be some accommodations made by the contractor in terms of the wage rate they are paying.
Other comments? Councilmember Wright.
I don't suppose that contractual labor would be here when someone might throw up in the middle of the council meeting, like has happened recently, and our dutiful custodian came and cleaned it up during the break. I wouldn't imagine that that would be the case. So there's benefits to having very committed employees. So I'm not in favor of looking at this at this point.
Councilmember Clay, you want to weigh in on this one?
I'm not interested in doing the contract.
Anybody else?
Yes.
Councilmember Schultz.
Says that there might be some decreasing, decrease in supervisory workload, and I just wonder if that would really in fact be the case, because when you're supervising employees, they know you, they know the supervisor, the supervisor knows the employees in many different ways, and I just don't know if you'd actually save money with the-
And I just don't know if you'd actually save money with, in that respect. I think you might not save any money.
Is anybody in favor of pursuing this?
No.
Unanimous? No.
The housing and community development budget, as a reminder, includes $30,000 for an economic market study. This is certainly something that could be deferred as a cost savings measure.
I'm tempted to want to go there, but if maybe if Ms. Danes could just tell us anything about the economic market study. My first reaction was, we don't want to get behind the curve on this. If it's something that we need going forward and wish we had done, on the other hand, it seems like a likely target. Any information you can provide on this in terms of timeliness of when it might happen and how that might interact with recovery going forward?
The department has proposed doing a market study on and off for the last couple of years and for a variety of reasons have ended up pulling it from the budget. If it were included in the reconciliation budget for this year, there are other ways that we could get the information. It wouldn't be as concise or as Tacoma Park specific. What we would do with the information that we're proposing, we incur the cost for, would be to supplement the market study that was done in the old Tacoma Main Street project and use that for a broader area to market some of the properties that are available throughout the community. And then as businesses approach us about the possibility of relocating to Tacoma Park, it's a helpful sales tool. Oftentimes, they will go ahead and do their own market study, but it kind of opens the door and piques their interest. But there are other ways of getting the information, it's just not as specific nor perhaps as current.
Comments? Councilmember Wright? Councilmember Snipper?
I would say, you know, none of these things are things we'd like to do, but at this point, not knowing what the final number is, I would leave this on the list as something that I would possibly do. But based on what the final numbers are, it could come on or come off, but I would definitely say that it's still on the table from my perspective.
Councilmember Snipper.
Thank you, Josh. I agree with that.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I really would love to see this study happen, but I honestly think that this is something that we couldn't, if we had to, do without. And I just think it's important to give our city manager some options here.
Councilmember Siemens.
I would be willing to vote today to say that this should be a savings that we take advantage of, but I'm willing to leave it on the table if you want.
Councilmember Clay?
I'm okay with removing it from the budget.
As am I. So it sounds like it's...
Sorry? I concur. I'm okay with leaving it in the reconciliation.
So it sounds like that we're assuming it's out of the budget, but it also sounds like there was some interest, depending on where things go, of finding ways to get it back in at some point.
Next item is the operating support for the Main Street program. Up until a year or so ago, we were giving them $25,000 a year. That got raised to $30,000. My proposed budget assumes a continuation of the $30,000 in funding. Certainly, one of the options is to reduce it back to the $25,000 a year that it was for quite some time. I think it was on Friday. I think Sarah did talk to Roz Grisby. She is aware that this was coming forward to the council. My thinking is simply not that they don't do a great job and couldn't use the money. It's just as other areas, service areas are taking cuts, it seems somewhat appropriate, in my opinion, that perhaps Main Street should also suffer a cut. But once again, I think it's a minimal amount of money, all things considered.
Councilwoman Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate, Barb, that you put this on the table for us to consider. Again, when I look at the results that we're realizing and the benefit to the city, I would be reluctant to cut this this year.
Councilmember Robinson.
I'm reluctant to cut it. It goes, as I understand it, pretty directly into the salary of the executive director, and this would be a salary reduction. And we haven't gone that direction for other salaries, so I'm reluctant to go that direction for this one.
Councilwoman Snipper.
I'd like to see it at least on the list as we were... We might need $5,000.
Councilmember Clay?
I'm okay with...
Okay. Councilmember Schultz.
I'd leave it in the reconciliation. I think it needs to be discussed further.
Councilmember Wright.
You know, I think that we get so much money, so much for the money that we spend in our contribution to the Main Street initiative, and you can see the fruition in some of the great businesses we've gotten in recently. I'd be very hesitant to reduce their budget at this time. And I think the $5,000 is so inconsequential to the overall problem we face that it's not going to make a material difference, so I would not be in favor of leaving it on the table at this point.
A huge swing vote.
My reaction to this one was, there's very few areas that have shown such great results as this small investment lately. I think people over the last, what, seven, eight months have seen any number of really good, interesting, vibrant businesses coming into the Main Street area. And I think it's an area of real concern, and I think we need to leave it at the $30,000. So it sounds like we have at least four people saying, yes, we need to leave it at 30.
The council may recall from the housing and community development budget presentation that there is $35,000 in funding included in my proposed budget for either major abatement actions or kind of clean and lean, such as cutting of weeds or trash removal. This is obviously something that is somewhat unknown. We have several significant problem properties in the city. Unfortunately, many of those are in Councilmember Robinson's ward. You know, this year...
And it's his fault.
No, it's not his fault. I think he might have actually inherited some of these from you, Mayor Williams.
Ooh! Maybe it's my fault.
In the current year budget, as council may recall, we had actually kind of rolled over funding from FY09. Unfortunately, we have not been in a legal position to move forward on some of those properties. So Sarah and I had talked about that and cut it back in our proposed budget for FY11. You know, whether or not we will be in a position to do anything with some of the more significant problem properties in FY11 is a question mark. This may be another case, such as we talked about in terms of unemployment claims, that the council may wish to go ahead and just reduce the funding somewhat. And if we do find ourselves in a position to be able to do something with those properties, we could either tap the general contingency account, assuming that hasn't been used up for other things, or simply draw money out of reserves as needed. I would not take everything out. There is certainly, I think, an indication every year that we might need to remove trash, cut weeds. Sarah and I had talked about it, and I think we would both be comfortable if the council wanted to reduce that figure by $15,000, leaving $20,000 in the operating budget to do some work on properties as needed.
Councilwoman Robinson.
Though I'm reluctant to reduce it because there are problem properties in my ward, I do acknowledge that we've been doing some good work in looking at, exploring ways to approach problem properties. And I'm confident that some of those ways will bear fruit, and so I'm in that, because of that, I'm content having it, reducing it from 35 to 20, given that 20 is still, we hope, enough to get stuff done.
And I'll say that I concur with Councilmember Robinson on that. And I would say that as part of that, that we need to keep foremost in our minds that that's a potential use for the contingency. So that doesn't, you know, so that every time we think we're going to use some of the contingency, we ask, and what's the status of problem properties?
Right.
Councilmember Wright.
I guess I go back to the discussion we had a few weeks ago, when I was actually here pre-injury. We're spending the money, but we often, most of the time, get this money back relatively quickly based on assessing this to the property tax of the residents, right? So it's not like we, again, we spend the money, but we do get it back in some timeframe, which is maybe not be in the immediate budget, but probably it seems like within the next budget year.
Assuming the person actually pays their property taxes and the property isn't put up for sale, it's usually within a year or two that we would get the funding back.
So, I mean, I'm comfortable, to me, it's like, as long as it's in the contingency and we can do it if we want to, we're going to get the money back. I'd be comfortable doing what Councilmember Robinson proposed.
Councilwoman Snipper.
Yes, I agree. I think this is a great use of the contingency fund.
Councilmember Clay?
I was going to say, keep it in the budget, that it added the property in the corner of Boyd Court in Incan Avenue, to your Clayton neighbors, but I suppose we can go back to the contingency fund, and that's okay.
Councilwoman Siemens.
I agree with you.
Me, too.
All right, we're unanimous on that one.
The next item is kind of more, don't have a specific proposal, but more of a philosophical sense from the council. Obviously, my proposed budget did include some reduction in facility hours, and that was addressed in a prior memo given to the council in terms of the cost savings. And I believe those reductions were actually on the reconciliation list generated by the council, which I assume you'll be talking about momentarily. Another cost-saving option is to further reduce operating hours of some city facilities. Before I would put together a specific proposal, I just really wanted to test the waters tonight and see if there is any tolerance on the part of the council, perhaps to reduce library hours or to further reduce the hours of the computer learning center or the community center itself.
And if I can get one point of information on this, my understanding, and I'm not sure that this is correct, but I want to check it, in the proposed realignment and reduction of hours for the community center, my sense was that included in the budget for that, given the lack of hours on Saturdays after 6:00, that there was still some money set aside for potential uses of places like the auditorium after 6:00 on a Saturday night. So that in the hours that we've seen that are the, kind of the whole fast hours of whenever it's open, that there's, that the budget includes additional monies for potentially opening the building, depending on what's scheduled.
And that is correct. Both the communications budget and the recreation budget included essentially a pot of hours, if you will, that could be allocated. Obviously, our proposal is not to be open on Sunday. We would be open Friday night until 10:00, and then obviously Saturday evening is a possibility for the auditorium being programmed. So essentially, there is money that we assumed as a staff would be spent in those two departments for events in the auditorium that would fall outside of our normal operating hours.
Okay, I wanted to get that clarification. Other comments?
What we were trying not to do is just have the facility open just to be open, but to try to open as required for, you know, for any type of special events.
Okay. Councilwoman Snipper.
I'm inclined to leave it the way it is right now. We have quite a few others on our list we can draw on, and, you know, it's something that could be done if it became necessary. So I'd be tempted just to leave it off the reconciliation list for now.
Councilwoman Siemens.
I would agree with Councilmember Snipper.
Councilmember Clay?
Excited about this one.
Sorry, I didn't catch the first word.
I said I'm not excited about the...
Okay, not excited. Thank you. Other comments? Councilwoman Robinson.
I am in favor of not holding things open if they're not used. So I'm therefore in favor of leaving it on the table so that it can be managed appropriately and wisely.
Other comments? Councilmember Schultz.
I guess I would leave it on the lick of reconciliation, but I would sort of put it way down at the bottom of that thing, because I'd hate to have to cut any more hours than we are already proposing.
I would prefer to leave things as they are.
I agree.
Okay, so we have, I think we have, did we have...
There's at least four of you who are not excited about further reducing hours.
Okay. I kind of, I knew there were two, but I wasn't sure there were three.
I think you got four.
Okay.
Two last items, I think, as was discussed last Monday. The city's program registration software does have user fees associated with it. Approximately 35% of those fees are attributable to credit card charges. My recommendation, especially as we move forward with more kind of e-commerce, is that those credit card fees only be passed on to the consumer. I think as we talked about last week, as we move into using credit cards for store order fees, one of the things, if we start absorbing convenience fees, is the overall base fee will have to be increased just to generate the same amount of revenue. So I would like to start moving in the direction of having a kind of consistent credit card convenience fee policy. So I think this is probably not as much an issue of the $5,000 savings, but more positioning ourselves as we go forward and start using more online payments for a variety of things.
I'll just say, seems like a no-brainer to me. Councilmember Snipper.
No, I'm not in favor of this. I might be in favor of when the city, as you indicated, was doing lots of stuff with credit cards, but not for the recreation department. I think it strongly encourages people to sign up for classes when they can sign up online, and the fee is the fee. I suspect in the future we'll end up rolling these convenience fees into the fee we charge, as you were indicating, but I don't want to do this this year.
If I may, I would just note that, I don't know if you can equate a recreation program registration as you can for speed camera citations or parking fines, but people who use their credit cards to pay those items are assessing convenience fees. We're a little bit mixed right now in terms of what we do.
Councilmember Wright. I'm with Councilmember Snipper. I think it should be rolled into the overall fee. I don't think you should have a fee that discourages people from using the convenience. And I also suspect that that process reduces staff time on our side of not having to deal with checks or cash, as opposed to just a streamlined process of taking a credit card payment. I would also be cautious, and I think you might want to consult with the city attorney. In many states, it's actually illegal, even if you're a government, to charge a fee for using a credit card. Definitely is for businesses, and it can be also illegal for governments. So I think we would want to look into that.
I think it's already being done in Maryland. I mean, obviously, we do it for some things that we charge for.
I would double-check. I'm not sure, it's done places, but doesn't necessarily mean that it's legal. There's been court cases about it. And I would note, one of the most successful parking ticket and ticket collection entities in the country, the city of Washington, DC, and I've paid many of those parking tickets, does not charge a convenience fee when you use your credit card. So...
Councilwoman Robinson.
I would use, I would put a convenience fee on charges where it makes sense to get checks, if that's something that we're geared up to do. It's not so much that I'm Luddite and against high-tech and using, getting credit cards online. It's more that those fees, the proceeds go out of town to corporations far away, and I'd rather keep the money here. And 35% of the fees attributable to credit card charges really knocks my socks off. I'd like to recapture that 35%.
Others? Councilwoman Siemens.
I could support this. Since it's at $5,000, maybe it needs a further discussion beyond just the budget hearings. If we were to decide tonight, I'd vote for it.
Okay. Councilmember Clay?
I support it. It's the standard practice to charge the registration fee. I have a question. I hear parts of the prior response was rub it, but we're just talking about the credit card fee here and not the registration fee. And also, I'd like to know if somebody registered online, they have to pay the registration fee... online, they have to pay the service fee that we're charged, the service fee to use the registration network, if someone enters this building and registers sort of class, do we also have that, either $5 or something, registration fee for the system?
I can address that, Councilmember Clay, the fees, we don't charge extra for any of our programs, the city absorbs the fees, so the $3 fee is attributed to everybody who registers, whether it's online or they walk in, this is what we considered originally to be the cost of doing business, the credit card fee is also absorbed by the city, so the resident doesn't pay more, they pay the same rate as the other people who pay cash or with a check, it's just the 3% that the credit card companies charge for the use of the card, the city picks that up, in essence subsidizes the purchase.
Well, I support this.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Schultz.
This is a toughie, but seeing as we're talking about raising or charging fees, in some cases, we've never charged anyone for, before, meaning that some of the programs used to be free, won't be quite so free anymore, I hate to kind of also ask our residents, or whoever's paying, you know, over the ActiveNet software, to have to pay a convenience fee, it's the sort of thing that just sort of bugs the heck out of people, so I'd rather see that fee, I think, just absorbed into whatever other fees we decide we need to charge for these programs.
I might add, I think we're all aware that Tacoma Park is different, the company, ActiveNet, actually had to change their computations and their software, we seem to be the only community that absorbs these fees, so just thought I'd throw that in.
Councilmember Robinson, did you have another comment?
I was just, actually, I was trying to clarify this 35%, what's the 35% figure mean?
Of the fees that are paid, so I don't have the figures in front of me.
Let's just say that it's a $50 enrollment, and there's some number, some amount of fees on top of that, is that correct?
No, we don't add any amount.
Okay.
For every $100 we're collecting, we pay 35% of that $100 to the ActiveNet software or credit cards combined together.
That's correct.
So, whoa, that's what I hoped, I hoped it didn't mean that, but now, thanks for clarifying.
So, our fees are low compared to what our costs are.
The cost for the fees is huge, is what I'm hearing, yeah.
But how do we get $5,000 then?
Because we're only talking about the credit card fee here, we're not talking about the?
The transaction fee.
Correct, and it sounded to me like we had four in favor of making this change.
The last item that I had was just to kind of refresh the council's memory on a couple capital projects that were being proposed to be funded out of the general fund, there were very few of those, one, obviously, there is a portion of the public works facility that will be paid for out of the general fund, the items that I flagged this evening would be neighborhood commercial center improvements, there is $32,500 in the budget for that, as noted in my memo, about $10,000 of that would need to remain in the FY11 budget to complete a project that's already approved by the council, the council could decide to defer any public art installations, and as well as any street light upgrades in FY11, so these are all capital projects that I just wanted to remind you of, and try to get a sense if the council has any interest, if need be, in deferring any or all of these to some future fiscal year.
And that proposed total is $64,000.
That's right.
This is a $64,000 question.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Robinson.
The street lighting upgrades, do they improve efficiency?
I think it might be a little bit of a misnomer, they're typically not, it's more of a system-wide street light upgrade, it's more of a resident, Councilmember Robinson, wants to have a new street light installed, as opposed to changing out an existing light, so it's really probably, kind of a misnomer, it should probably be new street lights.
So, it adds to our energy bill?
That would be correct.
And I'm okay with not adding to our use of energy, although I know that people want lit streets, I'm okay with leaving it on the reconciliation.
Councilmember Snipper.
Yes, I as well would like to leave all three on the reconciliation, we can see how much we need later.
Anybody disagree with that?
Councilmember Clay?
I disagree, I'm not in favor of leaving neighborhood commercial center improvements on the reconciliation list, I'm not in favor of leaving the street lighting upgrade on the reconciliation list, you could convince me on the public art installations, if I knew a little bit more about what they are.
Okay, well, but it sounds like you're in the minority on that one, because my sense was that everybody here was in favor of putting them on, or did you?
We didn't talk about splitting, but Mr. Ray had his hand up.
Go ahead.
I would agree with Councilmember Clay.
Picking up the board, coming back along the stretch, along the rail.
Although I would hope that we wouldn't have to do both the things that Councilmember Clay mentioned, I would, I opt to say that I think we need to leave it on the table at this point, and depending.
I'm going to make one addition to my comment there, I'm particularly concerned if.
You got two, you got two.
I'm particularly concerned about the street lighting upgrades, because that's not just a phrase that actually adds street lighting in areas where it starts down, that there isn't any street lighting, and cities members come forward and want to improve safety in areas, so I would be particularly opposed to removing the street lighting upgrade.
Have we spent the street lighting upgrades in the past years?
First of all, I was looking at Daryl, I think it really depends on the requests that get received in any one year, and the lead time getting through Pepco is lengthy, to say the least, so I think it's one of those things that can be a question mark any given year, I know there are years since I've been here, Councilmember Wright, we've expended all $20,000, I think this year, I think it's unlikely that we're going to spend it all, because we just, we don't have any request in process, so it will vary from year to year, you know, one option the council may wish to consider is you just want to cut it in half, the figure in half, I think, Daryl, what's the typical cost of a light installation?
$2,000 to $5,000.
I don't know, Councilmember Clay, if you could hear that, it's $2,000 to $5,000 per light.
And these are the lights that, just so I'm clear, we pay to have them installed, but then if we want to actually own them, we have to buy them back from Pepco, I just wanted to be clear.
Yeah, those lights.
Those ones, yeah, and we pay it for the electricity.
And we pay for the electricity, and we pay the energy tax.
And they don't come out and replace the bulbs, the megaballs.
And they won't put them in if people want.
Yep.
Those.
Do you just want to take them item by item, like, I'm not really quite sure where things stand at this point.
Yeah, I'm not sure where they stand at this point either, it sounds like, is there anybody who wants to keep public art installations at $21,500 in the budget?
Is this a yes or a no question? I thought the question is, do we want to leave it on the reconciliation?
Okay, okay, does anybody want to, does anybody want to put public art installations at $21,500 on the reconciliation list?
Yes.
Okay, it sounds like that's unanimous, does anybody want to put neighborhood commercial center improvements at $32,500 on the reconciliation?
It would be $22,500.
Sorry, $22,500, did I hear any no's? No, I didn't hear any no's, yes, that one's on, and the, what I'm tempted to say, street lighting upgrades, first, I'll say, does anybody want to put $20,000 on the list, and depending on the answer to that, I may go to, does anybody want to put 10 on the list, anybody want to put 20 on the list?
Yes.
Sounds like everybody wants to put 20 on the reconciliation list.
I think so.
We'll leave it at that.
Thank you.
Okay.
You've got me so confused now. Some of these things we've been voting yes and no to, were not just to put them on the reconciliation list, but actual decisions that the council was making for the budget, this was all just.
It's all reconciliation.
And what does a maybe mean?
I didn't have any maybes in my mind.
I didn't have any maybes either.
Okay.
You might have.
You had a maybe.
I had a maybe, that's why.
Yes, you did.
You may be the only one that's confused.
So, if my tally is correct, we have just put $211,000 on the reconciliation list. Now, if we back up a little bit in the packet, I want to make sure that we cover any of the things that we, that have been put on the table so far, before we move to any new items, so I think if we go back, one memo in the packet.
This is May 7th.
This is the first, May 7th, now the second, May 7th.
Budget reconciliation.
Budget reconciliation items, correct, we have, I believe, dealt with the facility hours, the next one is the reduction in police staffing, if Councilmember Siemens and Snipper want to.
You had actually dealt with that.
Did we deal, oh, that's right, sorry, sorry.
I just didn't want to lose track of what items had come up.
Sorry, the stormwater fee surcharge, Councilmember Wright.
I would like to remove both the stormwater fee surcharge and wind power subsidy idea, I think they're both great ideas, I think we should pursue them when there's better economic times, but I don't think, based on what we're going to have to do in this budget, we can justify increasing either of those things, as sad as it makes me, because I think they're good ideas to help improve the environment.
Okay, I'm going to skip for a second to Ethan Allen Avenue, Councilmember Clay, you wanted to discuss putting money in the budget for repair of Ethan Allen Avenue, you want to talk about that one?
Sure, so we talked about the condition of Ethan Allen for a long time, and I always had the impression that the cost of fixing it, you know, somewhere up in the $1 million range, is where we absolutely needed to have the state do it, so when I found out that the cost was, you know, in the $150,000 range, I really have to ask myself, you know, why we continue to tolerate the road in that condition, when, you know, I think that we can take it, the fact is, apparently, we do a lot, and apparently, we also get, have a user revenue fee for it, even though the state is actively maintained, and I doubt if I, the user revenue fee could get earned, or near close, what it really takes to maintain a road, to have level of impact every day, I think for the benefit of all the people in our community who use that road, and for the benefit of the people who have to live on that road, and suffer the snow haze, and the vertical vibrations, and the halting, and all of the impacts that happens from living along that road, because the condition is, and that we need to fix it, and so, I would like to put a hurt, that we also have a longer piece of the end of the budget, to repair the street and the under surface of the street, and this used to be like, oh, what I, Friday day, I think, that it would be worthwhile drawing the money down from the reserve funds at this time to get the street repaired, I think it's really important, I was first, we were the city councilor, to determine whether how we could, if we were existing budget, or if we would have to draw the money down, but I really feel like it's imperative for the people who have to use and use along that road.
Councilmember Wright.
I agree with Councilmember Clay, I would add one thing, that I think if we do that, we should also take speed camera money and put whatever pedestrian safety measure we would like at Elm Avenue, because it's our road, and not the state highways, we can put a stop sign there, we can put blinking lights, that it's a crosswalk, I know that that's a significant safety hazard, and we've had, you know, in my short time in the council, a number of residents bring it up as an issue, and I think we should resolve that at the same time, and use speed camera money to do it, because it's a pedestrian safety issue, and I think every resident, if you took the, what's $125,000 or $150,000, and you divide that by the 20,000 or 18,000 residents we have, most people would be happy to have that road fixed for the $5 it'll cost them.
Councilmember Snipper.
Could we put a sign up that says this is a state highway and was fixed by Tacoma Park? So tempting.
Yeah.
I was going to say, we should put a toll up on it, but I think just pragmatically, that would be a little bit difficult.
Sorry, I had to read that, Councilmember Schultz.
I guess when, I'm sort of disbelieving about this estimate of $25,000 to do sub-bass repairs, because until your contractor starts digging, I don't understand how a person can, contractor can make a legitimate estimate of that low a number, considering the serious disrepair of that street, I mean, it is really bad.
That number actually came from us, not the contractor. State Highway has done some subsurface evaluation of the road, since we've been talking to them for over a year, they found the sub-bass to be in fairly good shape.
Really?
So, according to their report, the problem is largely exacerbated by utility cuts, and then surface, or, you know, the loss of the surface level, but the base of the road, according to what they've evaluated so far, is in pretty good shape.
And you trust them?
Yeah.
You do.
And that reminds me, you brought up about the utility cuts, and you mentioned that last week, or a couple of weeks ago, what's your sense of timing on that, because if we go ahead and do the road, and then the utility comes in and cuts it all up again, we're right back where we started.
Well, we certainly wouldn't want to resurface until we have clarity from Washington Gas about what their intention is for the 15 house connections they need to make in that section of the highway, we haven't gotten information back from Washington Gas after repeated requests, so we're kind of in a holding pattern right now, I think they're still trying to evaluate what they hope to do.
What's your sense of?
Timing?
Of how, given our experience with Washington Gas on these types of things, can you give us a timeframe, a general guess of a timeframe about when they would be?
Well, Washington Gas was evaluating and doing roadwork, and we put a stop work order on their work, because they didn't have a permit through us, and that was 30 days ago, so they were ready to go in terms of evaluation of the situation, they were trying to identify the location of the connections, so my guess is, it could be throughout the summer, that their gas line work would be taking place.
And, refresh my memory, would they then compensate us?
Well, we still have to develop permit conditions, we're still waiting to hear from them about the actual scope of work that they need to do, whether or not they would bore underneath the surface and make those connections, or how big of cuts they'd need to make, whether it be in the right of way, or whether it be in the street surface, we're still waiting to get that back from them, our past experience has been to require them to either do a mutual agreement with us, where we cost share, or whether they have to cover entire costs of certain aspects of it, depending on the square footage of the work that they're doing in the right of way itself.
Other comments, Councilmember Schultz?
I just wanted to continue, what about, in this estimate, is there any, does that include any curb and gutter repairs?
No, it doesn't include any concrete work, it's entirely asphalt.
Well, if it's, yeah, but there has to be some subsurface work, which would be concrete, would it not?
Our subsurface work doesn't tend to be concrete, we usually use asphalt sub-bass.
Really?
Now, there is concrete in that road, which is one of the reasons the sub-bass is in the shape it's in.
Oh, okay.
It's hard to know at this point whether that is from It's hard to know at this point whether that is from utility patches or whether, because in the past, utility patches were always done with concrete subbase.
Yeah, yeah. I just, seems like it makes sense to include curb and gutter work if you're doing all this asphalt work, because I hate to see all this beautiful asphalt laid and then gutters that are not draining correctly, or whether busted up for some reason.
The city fairly recently replaced the sidewalk on the south side of the street. You probably remember that was a program in cooperation with State Highway where they provided the funding, the pass-through funding for that. So, a lot of the concrete work on the south side of the street was done. The north side does not have sidewalk, but it does have curb and gutter. I don't know the extent of how many driveway aprons. That would be another issue that we'd need to evaluate. In the past, when we do road resurfacing, we tend to replace people's driveway aprons. However, in city code, the driveway apron maintenance is responsibility to the property owner.
And if I can just follow up on something you were just saying, it sounds like the assumption on the base, on the subbase, would be that it would be asphalt. And that's what we do. But what we do is roads that don't have the kind of traffic and the, potentially, the volume of the weight of traffic that Ethan Allen does. My concern would be that if we were doing asphalt there with the buses and trucks and that volume, that we would potentially tear through that pretty quickly.
Well, you're starting to get out to the extent of my knowledge on road repair, and an engineer should probably better respond, but the price that we have before us is a mill and pave, a two-inch or inch and a half mill and pave. So, it's not anticipating going into the subbase at all unless there's a defect within the subbase, and then you specifically address that area. You can tell when you mill what part of the subbase is defective or doesn't have the strength based on both appearance as well as movement within the subbase when you're driving equipment over it. So, the price we have is just to mill the top inch and a half and to repave. And after they mill, if there's areas where the subbase is obviously defective, then you go in and you remove that and rebuild it. And generally, what we do is use stone as well as asphalt mixture, which is what anybody does right now with roadwork. Concrete is not used in the subbase in very many other than superhighway structures.
Just, and I brought that up only because my sense was that there had been observations that there was pumping of the roadway out there in some sections in particular near, I think Prince George's Avenue. And it seemed like not putting an adequate, not having an adequate base or not addressing the base issue in an adequate fashion when going in there could lead to putting-
Oh, it'd shorten the life of the road.
Yeah.
But our evaluation so far has not, we haven't identified any pumping on that road. It's very hard to identify pumping until you are looking at the subbase. What I see, and what the engineer sees, and what the subcontractors saw when they drove out there, is surface defects and wear and tear and weather-related and utility cut-related defects in the street. The type of subbase work is what you see on Ritchie Avenue. That's where you, when you've got alligatoring and sinking streets, and that's the subbase. You don't see a lot of that that's not related to the surface problem on Ethan Allen Avenue.
So, you were saying that the, if you, in general, if you see alligatoring, that is attributable to-
Subbase disruption. I mean, again, it depends on the time you see-
Like under the new pavement in the middle of Carroll Avenue where the state just did it.
The nice little round man?
Yes, yes.
Oh, yeah, something obviously happened there, underneath the surface, yeah.
Yes, okay. And all along Lincoln.
Yeah, Lincoln, sections avoid where you can see a subsurface problem. It's not to say there's not alligatoring on Ethan Allen, it's just that's largely been a result of the surface pavement cracking up because of weather and utility cuts and temporary patching that was put in and out of there.
Councilmember Wright, do you have a question? I brought you some of those. Councilmember Sniffer.
So, I certainly support putting this on the reconciliation and getting some more information about the details of it, you know, an actual proposal with whatever information. We talked about some of the information tonight, but I'm having that all together.
Sounds like there's a majority that wants to put that back on there. I'll just say, there goes the 211. Councilmember Robinson, you had something that was related to this?
Yes, there's a stretch of Allegheny Avenue near First. It's a little triangle park, has a tree on it. It has severe sedimentation issues, and I would call it stormwater as well. The neighbors have been working with me and with Ms. Braithwaite for a year or something over a year, trying to figure out what to do and how to do it. And it's kind of dragged on, but now they're really ready to have something done, and they've put forth some plans. And the range of the cost for this thing is somewhere in $10,000 to $20,000. I'd like to add $10,000 to repair that part. Would mean a bump out in a couple of places to reduce the danger to pedestrians. A lot of kids play there. It would make the surface somewhat pervious so that the sediment and stormwater wouldn't run off. And it's not currently in our capital budget. I'd like to earmark $10,000 to that.
Any actions, comments, questions? Councilmember Wright.
Would that be, would that capital expenditure go into the stormwater fund? And is there excess money in the stormwater fund that could-
I was just clarifying with Daryl. Her opinion is that it does not fit within the parameters of the stormwater fund, so it would be a general fund expense.
Councilmember Siemens.
I know it's a difficult time this year with the budget, but I would support that in deference to Councilmember Robinson's decision.
Any other comments? Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I understand that the Holton Lane Business Redevelopment Program, there's some excess unspent Community Development Block Grant money, which the city is prepared to use to complete some of the street work on Holton Lane, which would include some bump outs. And in talking with Erwin Mack, the Executive Director of the Crossroads Development Authority, he thinks that putting bump outs up there on Holton Lane would really not be a good use of the city's money, block grant money. And I'm inclined to agree. And I sent an email earlier this, I guess it was last week, to Sarah Gaines requesting that those bump outs, which presumably are there to encourage, you know, help with pedestrian crossing of the street, maybe it's to slow down speeding traffic or cut through traffic or something like that, is really not needed. And if there's an area where we could save some money, it would be to eliminate that street work. And also, another reason simply is, is that with the possibility of Walgreens coming in and redeveloping that block adjacent to Holton Lane, we don't know what their site plan is going to look like, where their access, loading access and vehicular access is going to be. And I'd hate for us to spend Community Development Block Grant money perfecting Holton Lane and getting it just so, only to see that it needs to be removed at a later time. I just, Holton Lane is not a busy street. It's congested, but it's congested because of the people using the post office, the car wash. It's not congested because of cut through traffic. There's no room for anyone to speed through there. So, I'm not sure what the advantage of putting bump outs, what the advantage is in doing that. And so, I think in the interest of trying to conserve some money that could perhaps be better used elsewhere, I'd propose that we consider not undertaking that bump out of work there.
Good evening. The last phase of the Holton Avenue project that you're referring to is funded out of Community Development Block Grant Funds from FY10. Any funds that are not expended and invoiced and paid by June 9th then revert back to the county. So, the project that we're proposing to is the original project, excuse me, the original project that was presented to the CDA Board of Directors and internally, showing a series of streetscape improvements, lighting, landscaping, et cetera. And then, as funds were available, it included some additional bump outs to protect some streetlights, fire hydrants, so more clearly define some of the parking. We cannot go ahead and do the bump outs. The money would get turned back to the county on June 10th.
Councilmember Wright.
I guess we're getting a little bit disjointed in our conversation. I want to go back to Councilmember Robinson's request, so I can understand it more. What I heard was that there was sediment issue and a bump out for pedestrian safety. So, but is there actually road repair? Because the pedestrian safety issue seems like something that could go on the list related to speed camera money, and it could be prioritized. If it's actually roadwork, I feel a little uncomfortable prioritizing that roadwork over the whole list of streets that have been in existence for years. And the only times we made exception to that is, it sounds like we might make exception to it related to Ethan Allen, or at least we're thinking about it, but that was partially because we didn't know we owned Ethan Allen. And there was one other situation where the road wasn't actually assessed properly. I think it was in council member Clay's ward. But beyond that, if this road was assessed and all those other roads were, and we're talking about roadwork, I don't feel comfortable saying we should bump that item up the list over other roads, because I've had roads in my own ward where we've, you know, they've gotten worse since that list was done, and we didn't move them up. If it's stormwater and pedestrian issues, then I think we could fund them out of the stormwater and the speed camera fund, and that's a matter of prioritization there.
The area that the neighborhood has been interested in improving is a triangle section of right of way. I don't know if you've ever been on Allegheny Avenue, but it's sort of dogleg south of Elm. It heads off in one direction and then makes a turn. Right at that location, there's a triangle of right of way that is city-owned property, but it's been used by the community as a little mini park space. There's some trees there. Someone's, not the city, but someone else attached a tire swing or a rope swing to one of the trees, and the kids in the neighborhood play on that swing. So, it's just an area that's been adopted by the neighborhood, but it is a public right of way. It's now private property. Part of what happens there is because of the heavy foot traffic of kids and playing under the trees, the sediment is eroded and, you know, soils wash over the sidewalk. The interest of the neighborhood is to try to make the area a little more attractive, protect the trees. The idea is to bump out the sidewalk into the area that's now either adjacent to the curb or part of the curb. So, you would move the sidewalk further away from the tree swing area, so there'd be a little bit more room for the kids to play on the swing. There's also a curb cut that is, allows a person to park on what is ostensibly the city right of way. So, the idea would be to eliminate that curb cut, remove that parking area, and increase the green space that's now part of that right of way. The reason we don't, it's not a road improvement, it's really not impacting the road surface. The community has also expressed an interest in putting a speed table in that location. Because we have a separate process for handling traffic calming, we're not even considering those two things together, though I don't know that the neighborhood, you know, we haven't really had a discussion with the neighborhood as a whole to sort of explain the different ways you do things in the city, that we have a petition process for traffic calming, and we now have potential funds for sidewalk improvements. I don't know what that street would assess out. I haven't looked at it lately, so I don't know what it was ranked before in 2004. We're going to be ranking again in another year, year and a half, so there may be, you know, some better sense of that coming up. It would be a thing that we could potentially do when we're improving the road. We would potentially be able to move the curb and, you know, change the sidewalk, because we largely do a lot of sidewalk and curb work when we're doing street projects. But it just hasn't been looked at in that, in that way. So, the idea is to, you know, improve the neighborhood amenity with that green space, improve the amount of green space, and change some of the, you know, use of parking and whatnot in that area. I think the neighborhood had also come up with ways to make it more permeable, which in that way would make it sound like a stormwater project. But in and of itself, it isn't something that we would identify as a stormwater project as it's currently looked at at this point.
Nor as a street project.
Yeah, nor as a street project. It's really, it's a neighborhood improvement. It's, you know, it's-
And there's no pedestrian safety aspect to it.
Well, the pedestrian safety now, if somebody could get hit with the foot of a swinger as they're walking by, I mean, I'm not, I don't want to be, you know, glib, but it's not car-related, and there is an existing sidewalk, it just gets covered with dirt, you know, from the green space now, which is dirt and not green space. The idea would be to try to turn it into a mulched area that was more attractive and bigger, so the trees would have a better chance of, you know, maintain enough, you know, sustain their life for a while.
And the pedestrian safety aspect is, they're sensitive to the fact that people get onto Allegheny and then swing around that corner, and when they swing around the corner, they're right at the park. And so, they're concerned about their kids, the safety of their kids as they're playing in the park. So, I don't know if that's pedestrians, I mean, it sounds like pedestrian safety, but is it? I don't know.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. In the interest of time, I'd like to suggest we put this on the reconciliation budget and move forward with other important issues tonight.
So, it sounds like, I didn't keep track on this one. Do we have? How many are in favor of adding it to the reconciliation list? I see four. Councilmember Clay? It's four to three. Councilmembers Clay, Schultz, and myself are no. And I'll just quickly say that my reason is I've seen the reconciliation process as one to add things to reduce expenditures, not increase expenditures. Even though there are many items that I would love to be able to vote for in better times, I'm essentially taking the attitude that I don't want to make it even harder for us to get to the bottom line. So, that's on the reconciliation list as well. We have at least two council members who wanted to talk about, three at least, who wanted to maybe make proposals about recreation budget. And so, I want to deal with those, but I want to first quickly just go back through where we are, just to make sure that we have covered everything that has been put on the table so far. The two items added back in are the ones we've just finished discussing, the Ethan Allen Route 410 for $150,000 and Allegheny for $10,000. And the reductions were the user fees at $47,000, the non-departmental account insurance and unemployment reduction of $50,000, the clean and lean reduction of $15,000, the credit card fee of $5,000, the capital outlay of $64,000, made up of three pieces, and the market study of $30,000. All of those adding up to 211,000. And the city manager was wondering about if there was any prioritization of those. And what I would suggest was, of all those we've talked about so far, my sense was that the one that was most likely to be not on the final reconciliation list was the streetlight installation at $20,000, $10,000, or some amount, that that was the first thing that people wanted to kind of get back. Is that an accurate representation?
So far.
Yes, okay. Is there anything else anybody wants to kind of put up their equal with that one, just to help the city manager? No prioritization in terms of as numbers start to, I was going to say coalesce, I'll say coagulate.
Yeah, I mean, my hope is, in terms of putting together the agenda packet for next week, and certainly a lot of this will be driven by what happened- week, and certainly a lot of this will be driven by what happens tomorrow at the county council meeting, is at least to be able to convey to the public a better sense of where the council might head, depending on the outcome of the tax duplication, just to facilitate people coming to address you next week during the public hearing.
I had a question related to something I raised in a previous council meeting related to the budget, which is whether there's money being left on the table by businesses that aren't fully paying their, their personal property tax, and whether we've had any chance to even do a back-of-the-envelope calculation if there's any money there. This is basically businesses that, not, not for their buildings, but for our equipment and stuff like that, they're supposed to be, and many dutifully do pay, including, I think, our own mayor. But, but there's some suspicion by some of my constituents who are in the business community that that may not be something that's universally obeyed.
I have not personally looked at that. I'm going to look to Ms. Brooks to see if she has any information to share this evening.
Basically, the personal property tax is billed and collected by the county. There are some slow payers, but each year we get payment on those back years as well as the current payment.
Do you have a stenciling on the collection rate?
Not really.
We can certainly...
It's a self-declaration, right?
Correct. You're asking about people who aren't on the list at all.
Right. It's a self-declaration, basically, right? It's like the business owner has to, A, know that he's supposed to pay, he or she's supposed to pay the tax, and then actually do it if they have computer equipment, whatever the equipment is.
But if they're incorporated, they could lose their charter. They don't file the report every year.
They could, yes, that's true, but many of them might not be incorporated also.
Right.
Many of them would be small proprietorships or single, single owners.
And this is the tax that we're being asked to relinquish?
Well, we've been asked...
We've been asked to relinquish actually the inventory tax.
Which is a piece of the personal property.
Which is a piece of the personal property tax. But if you had a computer program...
And you know that because you pay that, right? I don't have any inventory.
No, but on a personal property...
Yeah, yeah.
If you had a computer program business, you'd have computers, and that would consider personal property, you'd have to pay taxes on it.
I think the short answer is, I mean, we would have to probably see what type of list we could get from the county and try to match it against our knowledge of businesses in Tacoma Park.
My suggestion would be to get that list and choose 30 names randomly on the list, and then, or choose 30 names randomly from businesses that you know exist in the city and compare it to the list, and that would probably give you a sense of, based on random sample, how big, how big the problem is, and it wouldn't take a lot of effort to do that.
Would it make more sense just to age the list? To see who owes 2006 versus 2000?
I think the issue is not whether they owe, it's people who either don't know that they're supposed to be filing or intentionally not filing. It's hard to believe this, but some people might actually break the law related to taxes, either intentionally or unintentionally.
Councilmember Schultz.
I don't know that it's going to be that easy. There's an awful lot of home-based businesses in the city of Tacoma Park. We just have to assume, given the nature of our economy, which is so much oriented to federal contracting and stuff like that, that these are kind of businesses, you don't need a business license in Montgomery County to operate, you don't need a certificate of occupancy because you're working out of your home, and if somebody chooses not to incorporate, they're, they're not going to be paying an inventory tax or a, I'm sorry, a personal property tax. And I just don't really know how you can go around doing that without violating people's privacy.
So, you see who advertises and compare it.
Yeah, all you have to do is take the Tacoma Park Survival Guide, choose 30 names at random from that, and look and see if they're actually paying their, their personal property tax to the county. It's not a violation, auditing people for tax fraud is not a violation of their privacy.
But I'm not talking about the ones that advertise their business, I'm talking about the ones that they don't advertise, that are not in the Survival Guide.
We may never find them.
Right, we're not going to find them.
We may never find.
Josh is developing one estimate.
It tells you that there's a...
He's only taken three businesses, so it's clearly not a precise estimate, but it is an estimate.
And then, what do you do with the estimate?
It gives you a general sense of how bad the problem is. If there isn't a single person on that list of 30, then you say maybe it's not a big problem. On the other hand, if it's 10 people, then we have a problem.
City manager wants to...
No, I was just saying, I think I understand Councilmember Wright's request. I, you know, I don't see that happening in the next couple of weeks before the budget is adopted. I have it on my to-do list, and we'll see what we can do.
Okay. And I also wonder if the rental housing stock is not another area that we should look at more closely on, whether they're...
They're licensed, they're...
Actually licensed, yes.
Okay. Is there anything else before we take a very short break and come back for recreation discussion? Okay, go ahead, put them on. There aren't recreations?
There are not recreations.
Okay, do it.
Okay. I have my perennial favorites, which I would like to see discussed again. I'll make another pitch for the lapse, and my concrete suggestion is that we look at the last five years, what the lapse is in salary lapse, and we take half of that, or half of the average, and we put that in the general budget, not associated with a particular department, and see how much that is. I'd like to find out how much it is, and that's one proposal. A second one is, I am, my other perennial favorite, is the unreserved fund balance, which I've been pleased to see has been declining over the last few years, which I think is good, but it's still, according to the way I figure it, you have it as of June 30th, 2011, and at the end of the fiscal year, at about 4.8 million. I'm looking at the general fund balance projection detail. You have it at about 4.8 million at the end of the fiscal year, and if you look at expenditures, just to pick that one, that's about 23 million. 4.8 million is about 28, 20% of 23 million's worth of expenditures. If I use revenues as the divider, it would be even higher than 20%, it'd be closer to 25%. And I understood that the target for these reserves, unreserved fund balance was 15%. So, I would like to see an explanation of why we shouldn't reduce the unreserved fund balance further to our target of 15%. And that would include an explanation of how that 15% is calculated, because that was not clear the last time we talked about it. So, that's my proposal.
My sense was that some of that had been addressed in one of these memos in terms of pieces that went into it that have been changed, especially in the current fiscal year. Am I correct in that or not?
That's correct in the current fiscal year, but it's not for the projected 2011.
Well, my sense is that that carries forward, that we made those changes.
Well, we haven't been given a revised 2011.
But I think it's built into there going forward.
You think? I think, I would like to find out.
I'm looking at the city manager.
I have to confess, I'm not quite sure if Councilmember Snippers is asking for it. I'm not sure how to address the question.
Okay, I'll try again. We have a very large unreserved fund balance. It's currently 20% of expenditures at the end of 2011. There'd be some adjustments, or 25% of revenues. Seems like a lot to me, because I've heard you talk about wanting a 15%.
I think it, I think ultimately this becomes a matter of policy. In my last community, I was asked to draft an unreserved fund balance, unreserved fund balance policy. It will vary from community to community. It was not uncommon in the state I previously worked in, given their funding sources, and we had a minimum fund balance requirement, ending your fund balance at 20%. That was actually, that's city's policy, and legislative would dictate it. I think you can say it what you want. What I would say is the percentage tends to go up the more uncertain your financial outlook is. One of the things I would remind the council is a significant portion of the contribution to the equipment replacement reserve this year is only made possible by the fact that we're drawing down the fund balance. Depending on what you think is going to happen next year, you can either go ahead and make the decision as a council to draw that number down. I would say if you're interested in drawing that down, what I would suggest is that we pay more of the public works facility with cash, and you borrow less. I think that would be my recommendation financially, to just lessen your expenditures going forward, given the uncertainty about FY-12. We have not done any financing yet for the public works facility, and that option is still out there.
And the, and the projected fund balance between June 30th of this year and June 30th of next year in the proposed budget reduces it from 6.5 million to 4.9 million, so that we've, we've drawn it down 1.6, 1.7.
Right.
And I guess, I would, I would say that my sense of how we might, given all of the uncertainty of how we're going to finally come up with the budget, my, my sense has always been that we were going to talk about a number of items, and at the end, depending on what the difference was, that might be the place that we have to look. And so, I was kind of looking on that as, in some ways, the balancer at the end.
So, you were thinking that if we needed to, we would dip into it then?
Right.
But not until then, okay. And I was proposing doing a little work upfront to get a sense, because last year, when I raised this issue, I was told that 15% was the kind of guideline for the city, and we exceeded that by some fairly substantial amount. I'm glad to see it's gone down, as I said, I just think it could go a little further.
Along Councilmember Snippers' point, is there interest on the part of the council to contemplate paying more of the public works facility with cash versus bonding, which would certainly reduce your debt service going forward?
Well, I was trying to get my proposal out there. If you want to add a, an amendment to it, that's, that's something worth talking about too.
And what was your proposal?
My proposal is just to, very simply, look at the size of our unreserved fund balance and get a sense of whether it could be reduced, given that it's a fairly substantial amount of money.
I support that.
Other comments?
I support that.
Councilmember Clay?
No comment.
Pardon?
She's having a comment.
Oh.
I'm not prepared to make the call at this point. You probably don't understand.
That's, of course, why I wanted to have a discussion.
Everybody else?
I think discussions are helpful, are healthy, and it would certainly be helpful in this case.
It sounds like that question is on the reconciliation list. I'm not sure kind of how it, how it plays out on the list, but...
Yeah, from a financial transaction standpoint, you can lower your unreserved fund balance, but what am I doing with it?
To make it, right, right. Okay, so that...
I urge you to include that in the discussion.
So, now, so now that gets to your question, are people interested, if we go there of paying more of the public works facility from reserves rather than through bonding? Is that, is that something that people are interested in?
To me, that's not, that's like, we don't know what the final accounting is going to be, right? Like, maybe we want to use that money to pay for the $150,000 to redo Ethan Allen Avenue, right? Like, there's a lot of options, and I think Ruben's point is good, like, what's the number that we truly feel comfortable at? And you probably want to do the lapse calculation he mentioned also, so that when we go into that reconciliation conversation, we actually have to make the numbers all net up, pad up, we can make a decision about what, what level we would be comfortable at, where the city manager would really say, no, I don't want to go below that, whether it's 15%, 20%, and what's the justification for that? That's, I think, the thing that Ruben's asking for, and I guess I support that.
And I, and I would just say that in theory, and hopefully in practice, this is the reconciliation discussion, because we're supposed to come up with a budget to go to the public hearing and for people to comment on next week.
Right, and I guess the point I wanted to make is, I think this is something that would be very interesting to talk about and understand better. I just wonder, in the timeframe that we have at this point for the budget discussion, whether it's the most productive use of time to have staff working on that with this short fuse, because it doesn't sound like a real quick thing to be able to put together presentations so that all the council members at this table are prepared to, to make a judgment on it by next week. So, I'm, I just wonder whether now is the time to do that, or should we do that after the budget hearings for next year's?
I'll, I'll go back to my point, which is, I think it could well be the balancing factor as we get to the end of the discussion, and it could well involve, as Councilmember Wright mentioned, the Ethan Allen piece or something else. And I think if we, I think maybe the way to approach it is that there's interest on the council in holding that as a possibility, and given that, since we don't know what that number is going to need to be, it might be helpful to, to get a sense of the city manager's comfort in potential uses of that for a couple of items, you know, maybe in, what, I don't know, 100 or $100,000 increments, if, you know, if it's like, you know, 100,000 is easy, 200,000 is still okay, 300, now we're getting in an area where you feel uncomfortable.
But at some point, that, at some point, it starts to impact your ability to bond...
Right.
And the, the view of the city's financial stability. So, you don't want to go too far, but the question is, what is the flexibility?
And there is no right answer or simple answer. It's, a lot of it is evaluating the risk going forward and the, and what is going to happen down the road a year from now. If everybody who has an opinion on this says it's going to be worse, are we going to want some flexibility there? Do we use the flexibility this year? How close to the line do we get it? And, and as I say, there is no right answer. Does that get to the issue?
I would just offer that, that there probably are some standards along municipal...
There are, and we've talked about those.
And, well, that may be true. I haven't been a party to those discussions, and if, if the level that we're at at the present time is what's customarily considered to be standard in municipal finance to protect our, as, as Councilman Wright says, to protect our bond rating, our ability to sell bonds at a good interest rate and things of that nature, then that becomes a, you know, a very powerful guiding factor. But if there's some leeway in there, and we're looking at, you know, eliminating things that are as little as $2,000 or $5,000 from the budget, that seems sort of out of proportion and certainly worth putting in on the reconciliation. and certainly worth putting in on the reconciliation.
So the, I'll take that as, what we're keeping on the reconciliation list is working with the unreserved fund balance bottom line to potentially make up for some of the things that we can or can't do, and that the city manager can pull together sometime this week and get to us the figure on the lapse, so that we know what that is.
The, there is some information included in your agenda packet regarding FY10.
Right. How difficult is it to get other figures?
We can go back. I guess what I would say is the value in going really far back, because I think we know from the compensation and classification study that was done last year, there were departments where we were historically paying low. With the council's indulgence, I would probably want to just go back in more recent years where we started getting our salaries in line. I think it's some of the more tenured members of the council who I can go back four or five years ago, where we had significant number of vacancies in police. That hasn't been the case, and as the largest city department, I don't think personally there's that much value in going back several years and looking at a situation that hasn't existed for some time. So I think if that's okay with Councilmember Snipper, I'll just go back to the more recent year or two.
Sure.
If that's okay.
Okay, great.
And what I would probably do, just to make sure I'm on the same page, is in terms of the unreserved fund balance, I don't think, for some of you, this will be new, but certainly, I guess my recommendation, if you want to draw it down, is to do something that would position the city financially going forward. I think we're well aware, I think all of us at the table, that the Equipment Replacement Reserve went for many years without being funded, and I guess what I would encourage you to do is to look at those things, such as either lowering your bonded indebtedness or moving more money into the reserve, rather than trying to take on new expenditures.
Right.
So I'll have that way next week.
Yes, okay. Anything else before we do a very short break in recreation? Let's come back in five minutes.
Wishing that we could look at the big picture and not just at this year's, thinking about this year's budget, but look forward to the fact that the city manager has told us that we may be facing some very difficult times, not just with this budget year, but with next year, too. And that rather than looking at just what our limitations are revenue-wise this year, that we look for ways to reduce our expenditures, to position us better, not only for this year, but as we go into next budget year. And last week, I, at the end of the meeting, I asked Mayor for a discussion of Recreation Department at a special session that, because of schedules, wasn't able to work out. And a couple of email communications with the city manager realized it might be best to have my own ideas better formulated and actually put together a proposal, rather than just have an open-ended discussion, as I had suggested. So as I looked at it, I said, and the reason I mention Recreation Department is because I've looked at some of the ideas that we've had on the table, and whether it be reductions in budget for public works, or reductions, you know, people have suggested cutting back at the library, or I suggested cutting back on the number of uniformed police officers. In all these cases, we're talking about, you know, when we talk about staff cuts, we're talking about program cuts, and it's really the programs that are important. And where would we be able to make reductions that would be, still be able to serve the community in an acceptable way? I tried to look at what works well, and I see that, in addition to many of the, much of the city staff work that we do, I've heard a lot of positive feedback about our Arts and Humanities Commission. And so as I put together this proposal and talked with my colleagues on the council, I came up with the idea of establishing, for the council, to establish a recreation commission that would assist the city government in providing recreational programs for the community. And again, looking for ways to minimize the impact of service reductions on the community itself. And what I'm suggesting is that the, a council-appointed recreation commission would be given the responsibility of scheduling and programming our recreational facilities, with the exception of senior programs. That we would eliminate staff-run programs and depend exclusively on contractor and volunteer programs. That we identify, we have the commission identify the programming needs, design programs to fill those needs, and locate program providers, whether they be volunteer or contractors, to provide those programs. Lastly, I would suggest the recreation committee would select the vendors for the contractual programs, and then the city staff would ensure that the contractor selection process meets the legal requirements for expenditures of public funds. And the city would actually contract with the vendors and oversee that the contracts are fulfilled as required. You know, this is obviously not something that, we're not going to design a new business model for the Recreation Department or any other portion of the city, sitting here tonight at the table in a few minutes. It's something that would take time, and so my suggestion is that we commit to this framework and move towards a new model, implementing it in several months, picking a date after the summer programs, to actually implement a new model. I'm not prepared to put an amount on the table tonight of what that would mean, what the effect would be on our budget. I think it's something that the city manager might be able to make an estimate of before next week, and that, you know, we could adjust that amount, you know, in the months as we move forward, and actually define in better detail the way the new model would work. I think the, I suggest that we also charge the recreation commission, after it's established, with developing a plan for moving us towards self-sustaining recreation programs in something like a three-year timeframe. Anyways, that's the proposal I would like to add to the recreation, or the reconciliation list.
Councilmember Snipper?
I want to see if I understand your proposal here. The kind of guiding principle was not necessarily to look at program cuts, per se, but to how the services are delivered.
Exactly. In fact, trying to determine how we can save taxpayers money, and at the same time, provide a model that would allow them, through their participation, to continue the level of services that they chose.
Councilwoman Robinson?
Is, are there other places using this model?
I think, I'm not sure, but I believe Mansfield, New Jersey, does. They have an all-volunteer recreation commission, but I'm really not that familiar with their program.
Okay.
And I don't know if they're the only one, or if it's the same as this.
Do you know how Green Belt's organized?
No, I don't.
They have paid staff, Councilmember Robinson.
Do they have a commission, or do they, what, they extend the community involvement in developing programs? I guess that's the question.
I'm going to look to the rec staff to see if they have any idea.
I'm not completely familiar with Green Belt's model. I do know that they have, up until recently, until he retired, a director and two assistant directors, and I'm guessing, I'm going to guess here, four or five managers paid, and any number of part-time and other full-time staff.
They have fairly extensive facilities. I believe a couple of years ago, some of the councilmembers had the opportunity to tour their facilities, and at least to the best of my knowledge, based on that tour, those were all paid staff members that we met that Saturday.
I remember, I was on that.
Okay.
I do remember a great deal of public input and public involvement. I don't remember the specifics, but I do remember that there was a good deal of public involvement.
Yeah, I can certainly contact their city manager and get more information. I'm just not that familiar with their programs either.
Councilmember Schultz?
Oh, I wanted to ask Councilmember Simmons if his proposal is sort of targeted towards the idea of reducing professional staff in favor of using volunteer staff to accomplish the development of, or the selection of programs and the implementation of the programs in terms of, not so much administrative side, but when I say implementation, to actually carry those programs to the people and to operate those programs with volunteers instead of paid professional staff like we have now. Is that part of your strategy?
That is part of it, but it does also rely on the use, as we do today, of contractor staff for recreational programs. So it kind of combines, it takes what we do today, it takes some of the planning, scheduling, and programming pieces, and moves that out of that, out of the professional staff's hands, into the volunteer's hands.
Councilwoman Roy?
But it is correct that it's not, you're not necessarily trying to replace programming, per se, with more volunteer and less professional. It actually could be the opposite, right?
Right.
You could choose, one of the nice things about using more external people, whether they're volunteers or not, to do the programming aspect, is you can, you could choose, in some cases, to get someone who has more professional expertise in a particular area that you want to do programming in, to run that class or that set of activities. One question I had, I just wanted to be clear on, is there would still be a set of professional staff or full-time staff that would oversee the facilities, because there's a bunch of facilities we have here that are, in essence, self-serve, right? There, there's the game room here, there's the teen room, over at the rec center, there's workout facilities. We're not proposing that that staff would be replaced by volunteers, are we?
No, not at all. And in fact, some of that, I think, needs to be defined as we work over the next few months on this new model, exactly at what level the city would have to staff, the city government would have to staff the facilities. For example, you know, we may determine that a single staff member with the proper credentials for CPR and AD and bloodborne pathogens may be sufficient with a trained volunteer. Or we may determine that, you know, I'm not proposing how we approach the field maintenance. Again, that some of those details could be worked out during the transition period. But you're right, you know, there would still have to be staff members responsible for the facilities.
Councilmember Clay? Do you have any questions, comments at this point?
I'm still listening. It's my concern here, I guess, a little bit more about the implementation and more structure of how the commission would impact the staff, and any comments that city manager might have on implementation. So I might have some components that would work in, because I've been thinking about this a lot, wrote some notes in the last couple of hours about some things. So I'd like to hear from Councilmember Simmons about, so, a couple of things that can get a sense of closer attention.
I'm not sure I caught enough of what you were saying. You broke up at one point.
She asked for the city manager's comments, and I don't know whether it's fair to put Barb on the spot, you know, thinking on the fly, it might be something better.
Well, I think I'm a little unclear about what the objective is here. Our rec department, like every other rec department and every other city I've worked in, does make extensive use of contractors. Their approach to providing service is a combination of programming done by staff and programming done by contractors. So I guess I'm, like Councilmember Clay, not entirely clear about what is being proposed, and I guess, for my own benefit, in fairness to those employees who are sitting here, and I see Mr. Burbank back, who also has members, is what positions are being proposed for elimination? I mean, I think that's the question on the table, and I don't know if there's any sense of what is being proposed.
I think that's a level of discussion that I'm certainly, as a policy person, not the right one to ask about, how this would affect the management. That would be something you would have designed, but I think the purpose is to reduce our costs by substituting volunteer labor for staff positions.
I mean, I can go through programmatically and ask some clarifying questions. I don't know if that's appropriate at this time, but I'm really having trouble, I guess, understanding what the objective, and if I'm to prepare numbers for reconciliation, I think we do need to get into some level of detail about which positions and programs we are proposing to be eliminated.
So could I try and take a shot at summarizing what Terry said, to see if it might add clarity? Would that be okay? Sure. So what I heard Terry say was that the staff that maintains the self-use facilities, so anything, you know, you're going to have to have some level of staff here for people who walk in the door and want to use the teen room, or want to use the workout facilities. So you have that, you keep that as is. Any programmatic thing that's run by the Recreation Department currently, by internal staff, all of that would change. So any programmatic thing would be done by outside people, either paid professionals or volunteers. And that there would be a recreation commission, I think is what you used, that would be a set of volunteers that would program, decide on what those programs would be, and there still would be some level of professional staff that would help to execute the agreements with the professionals providing the services or the volunteers providing the services.
So in other words, Paula Lasowski, our recreation manager for senior programs, would be laid off, is what I'm understanding, and she would be replaced by a contractor or a volunteer? Is that correct?
Actually, I think I... Actually, I think I said in the beginning, I should have, if I didn't, I said except for senior programs.
Yeah, may I ask why that would be different than any other program that the city is doing?
I think that's a program area, the use is a program area where we have much more interest in the volunteer community. And I think it's, it's less likely we would find the number of volunteers to work in the senior program area.
I guess my question would be, with this model, what guarantee do we have that we would find the commission volunteers who would have the time and expertise and willingness to do this?
It doesn't come with a guarantee. It comes with a guarantee that we could reduce the expenditures, and yet there's a strong sense that, that I got from the discussions last week when the recreation committee was here and from the performance that we've seen with the basketball program, the soccer programs, the youth football programs, that there, those are very large, successful programs that are run by the volunteers. And again, we heard from recreation committee last night, and I will say that they, you know, this was not a proposal put forward by them. This was something that I worked on with, some discussion with my colleagues on the council. And, but yet I still have the strong sense that the, that the city residents, number one, would like to see, would like to not see an increase in taxes, and they would also like to participate in a volunteer basis with the youth programs, the youth recreational programs.
One, thank you. I would have is that the volunteers that we now have that work with, say, the basketball program, those are time-limited commitments. Obviously, they're for the duration of that program. You tend to get volunteers because there's the parents who have young people involved in the program, sort of like PTAs. You know, once your child graduates from elementary school, you don't sort of see a need to belong to the PTA anymore, because they've gone to a different school. And so because they're time-limited, people can budget a time to provide their volunteer services. But volunteering for a recreation commission sounds like a full-time job. It's certainly 12 months a year, year after year. And I guess I would wonder how you're going to find people to have that type of discretion, particularly, I'm thinking of like younger, younger people, not retirees necessarily, because you need younger people to keep up with the younger people. And then, and I think, well, who are these, who is going to train these volunteers so that they understand the scope of what their responsibilities are and the complex decision-making that goes with that? And how can we guarantee or know that when volunteers are supposed to show up and make decisions, that they're going to show up and make those decisions and sort of say, well, we're going to be out of the country for the next month and we can't, you know, that sort of thing? I mean, with volunteers, my experience is, one tends to get what one pays for. Because, you know, you can't fire a volunteer because they're volunteers. It's the nature of the beast. So I think having volunteers and enriching the program with them is critically important to the success of the recreation program and its expansion.
Councilmember Simmons, then Councilmember Snipper, then Councilmember Roy.
Just real quickly, I would say that, you know, we're certainly not looking for hundreds of volunteers to staff a commission, and we're looking for a number of volunteers. And we've been very successful in the past with finding volunteers for a recreation committee. It may turn out that some of those are the same people, or maybe not. But I think that your questions about vacations and that, you know, it's a commission such as the Arts and Humanities Commission, and you probably have a different size group that allows for knowing that some people aren't going to be there all the time.
But the Arts and Humanities Commission, like most of our committees, meet once a month, unless there's some special purpose. My impression is, is what we're trying to do here is have something a little bit more substantial than that.
I, yeah, I don't think we're talking about full-time jobs, no, by any means. I think, you know, I look at, at much of the work that's done in, for example, club sports, there's a lot of planning that goes on, but again, they tend to meet on an infrequent basis. There are periods of time where there's some intensity to get the work done. Anyways, go ahead.
Councilmember Snipper.
Yeah, I think this is a very interesting idea. It's a completely dramatic change, however, and that's always difficult for people, hard to think about. I know that the, before there was a recreation department in Tacoma Park, it was done on a volunteer basis many, many years ago. There are, as you cited, several successful, you know, the soccer programs, baseball, basketball programs, that includes a large numbers of volunteers. They've been going on for, in some cases, decades. And there, sure, there's turnover, there's all the problems you alluded to, but somehow they managed to, you know, have the games and the kids show up and people have a, you know, it's a low-key thing, people have a good time. I think this is worth some serious thinking. It would change dramatically, I believe, what recreation looks like in Tacoma Park, because some of the things where the turnout is low, that we currently do, probably would disappear altogether. And some of these other things, like soccer and baseball and basketball, which are popular, you know, would flourish, be a lot of, you know, energy and so on by it. So I think there's, you know, the big trade-off between doing what we're doing now, it has a lot of good stuff and a lot of stuff that people talk about, we'd like to see it done differently. And then we have something new that we've only have limited experience with, and of course, there's the, how do you get from here to there, too? But one of the things I hope we would look to in the next couple of months, if we decided to go forward with this, was some examination of where the gaps might be. You indicated, for example, senior programs. I think that's an excellent example of having identified something where a volunteer program probably would not work very well. It's hard to think of a bunch of 55-year-olds volunteering to take care of the 65-year-olds.
Wait a minute, you're starting to touch home now.
I know, well, I'm turning 65 soon, so I'm thinking about this. But on the other hand, I do think that the programs where you have a lot of kids, those could very well run. So I think that if we were to move forward with this, it would be a challenge to figure out, okay, so which program is like, more like the senior kinds of programs, where you're going to need paid staff, and which programs are you going to be able to do as volunteers? Obviously, we'd make some mistakes, you learn from your mistakes. But I definitely think this is something worth exploring seriously. I don't think that, I think you're rather optimistic that we could do this in a few months, but I think it would be very worthwhile to examine a proposal like this in greater detail. It's been time working on it. And I would actually encourage the recreation department to participate in this process, because I think the recreation department, for one, has a lot of knowledge about how programs work and don't work, that you could bring to this process. And there are, correspondingly, are a lot of people in the community who have experience running these very successful programs. We could hear from them as well. And as you pointed out, the recreation committee would be a great place to, you know, to start drawing that from the community side, because they would be able to help identify, well, you're more likely to have this program be successful than this one, and that would help us sort out what staff would do and what...
And they probably know the volunteer base better.
And they know the volunteer base, yeah.
Councilmember Roy, do you have a question?
It's not so much a question as a statement, I think, in the sense that, I'm not, I would like to actually decouple this conversation from the budget conversation at this point, only because I don't think that in the timeframe we're going to need to approve the budget, we're going to get enough council members, or the city manager, or the staff, comfortable with exactly what we're talking about in the direction, you know, future direction of recreation. And it's going to create a lot of agita for staff and not numbers that we can bank on in the budget. So what I would propose is that we assume for our budget that we do what the city manager has proposed in terms of the financial accounting for the budget. Of course, in reconciliation in the next two weeks, who knows what the county's going to do? We might decide to cut programmatic areas further, rec could be one of them, could not be. But that we then have a very, you know, we take some time, because I do think it's a conversation over a couple of months, probably maybe with a smaller group of council members who are much more interested in the issue and have more time to dedicate to it, recreation and the recreation committee. And I would even propose, maybe a way forward would be to take a programmatic area, if we think it's the teen area or the, you know, young kids' area, and say like, well, how would this actually be implemented with one of these smaller programmatic pieces? We know it's not the senior area, for example, we don't think that seems to be a fruitful way. And to work through how that would take place. Now, that requires a leap of faith on the recreation department staff's side to say, I'm going to go down this road, and it may actually mean that in the process of that, I eliminate my own job, which I think is like a crazy process to think about. But personally, for me, that's always the type of person that I would want working with me, is someone who would say, I want to do what's best for the situation and for the employer that I am working for. If that means I don't have a job, then I'll go find a job. And actually, as the employer, I'd be much more likely to say, this person's smart, there's some role for them here in the city. And so that's what I would propose going forward, and not to try and combine this and compress this into the very short budget cycle that we have to do our work in, basically. Because I don't think the city manager has enough sense of what we are, you know, what you're proposing to actually say what the budget implications with that would be.
And let me just add on that, that my sense from last week in discussion with the recreation committee and the recreation department was that the council was going to go forward and agree with the recreation committee's recommendation and request that they come back quarterly. And we worked through some questions that need to be addressed that they brought to us, and that it would be helpful to kind of devote some time to this. And so your sense of that timeframe and having that discussion in that way, I think, is helpful. Councilmember Robinson.
I think it's an interesting idea and direction, and I agree that we should decouple it from the budget process. It strikes me more as a refinement of the strategic plan that we have, that maybe a subset of the strategic plan as regards volunteers and recreation in particular. And the other thing that comes to mind is a definition or a redefinition or a sense of what exact responsibilities that this proposed recreation commission would have, what powers and responsibilities do they have? So we need to, to me, if we're going to continue this, we need to clarify that and try to put it in the context of a strategic plan or direction or something.
I appreciate those comments, and I, you know, I started with kind of a feeling like we ought to be looking at something, and last week was asked for a more specific proposal, and so I gave a more specific proposal, but certainly haven't had the time myself to think through the details, nor did I think I was qualified by myself to do that, so.
Councilmember Clay, I'll check in with you again.
Okay. So I would like to report, Councilmember U, direction in looking at how to engage more volunteers in context of the recreation department. I sent some of the notes today, so those of you who have laptops there, you can read them. Barbara, Dan, Level, Derek.
No, she's here.
She's in the room with us.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I have the notes that Dan and Jess got, and now if it would be helpful to have somebody print it out so that people who don't have computers could follow along, but if that's not possible, I'll just kind of go for it, okay?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So I would, so I would propose something that may help us move along to a place where we could work more on the recreation commission idea, and I would like to bring this back around and reconnect it to the budget discussion. So I'd also agree with councilmembers that it's, you know, partly about the strategic plan and it's partly about policy. So I was thinking about the three goals, the, the three goals are the recreation, sort of, having cost coverage policy to balance the service goals with the cost burden, and to support average and low-income residents in access to any service. This is, you know, simple things that I hear about. And so one of the things that some of the councilmembers, including Councilmember U, and Councilmember R, are talking about is that we could want to adopt a variety of different approaches to developing programming and evaluating program quality based on individual programs, not just a resident survey. And I think there's evidence that the recreation department is using contracting and different models of program delivery, in that including working with volunteers, some of them are best quality, and other contracting in there has been positive resident feedback, particularly based on the, the variety, variety of programs. And what I would like to see is too, is kind of take that and take it more, we're seeing what's to our, our position, so when they experience the recreation programs, it's not, you know, stark different in how they approach their work with programs that are contracted or live programs that are every city does. As far as, I think we're looking, and it's something that I hear Councilmember say, about increasing our public private and public nonprofit partners that we have, and continue to move on towards that. As far as considering the delivery services, we need to redirect our efforts to the most successful of our program models, focus on what we best, what are highest needs. And so last week, we heard from the recreation department that our challenge is engaging folks in 13 to 18-year-old age groups, and I think that the, through rationale that they, of course, which is that there are quality programs that are available through their schools, is reasonable right now. So maybe we should refocus some of those efforts that we have now to try to get teenagers into scheduled programs here at the city and give them more light, it's more a freeway in order to redirect some of those efforts. And one of the things that I heard you say in relationship to that is that the kids sign up at the last minute, which would indicate that there's a greater need for drop-in or spontaneous activities that are available after school, and we could, we could ask to focus that. we could ask to focus that accordingly. So one of the things that we're all preparing for people, and I can keep this, this idea about utilizing contractors, is that we develop programming that uses all of our resources. And the things we hear about, that we have this great art room that doesn't really get as well utilized as people would like, using the dance and more organic activities, more fully engaging programming around the school, having a lot of programs coming online, and that we have, you know, we have bus, and we have the ability to be a user-communicative programming. When I was a kid, my mom used to sign me up for programs in the old bus that were run by the, by the county, not the building there, for this essential, the like, the hall we had essentially. And the other thing that I heard out of the last meeting was that there's an interest in having Recreation Department really look at what the overall capacity of our available resources is, and to see the recreation program be built out so that it fully utilizes all of our, the full capacity that we have in our available resources, because our residents and us that lost money in the community center and other things that are there and available in revenue purposes, and we would really like to see them fully utilized. This brings me to the second goal, which is looking at the cost recovery so that we can build out to the best companies of scale. Have you guys just, you hear me everything, okay?
Yes.
Okay. So the second goal that I was making out is that we would establish cost recovery policy that balances our service goals with the cost first. And I think this would help us get to some of the things that council members, Stevens and the other council members are talking about, and I could also link in that to the use of the word enterprise. So I would suggest that we, we start out distributing our cost, the programs based on cost centers, and I think that there's pretty, some pretty objects. And the first one would be the community center, or the, our school, school center, and that includes course programs and auditoriums. I think this is probably where there's the greatest capacity for cost recovery. The second one would be the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center, and I would separate that out because that has, has a different cost structure, it gets some money back from the county, it serves slightly different populations, as you probably looked at the, at the dynamics of the two, the two centers. And then the third cost center would be programs where it's not related to cost to the, for cost recovery, and there'd be an expectation of cost recovery. So a couple of advantages of that would be the senior programs we talked about, and then also our, our drop-in programs. Really difficult to do a lot of cost recovery in drop-in programs like, you know, the teen room, or the anger room, or, or, you might add, the senior programs, for example. And the place that I have to plug this in, in directing the Recreation Department, the district case in the hall, the bill programs to be self-efficient, and of course, our individual programs would, would also be self-efficient. So in terms of like, after care program, I would prove it as individual program, or the summer camp program, you know, you would, you would accept a program, actually, a kind of set of life programs. And that, that helps find options, involves more integrated sort of management and more general, overhead cost. Yeah, we, I, I have programs for the, for the new generation population, and utilize the program to support some of our, our loss, loss leaders, especially. So we might have some programs that, that's better, where we need some programs to help bring kids in, but they might be one-time programs, like, you know, the student trips might be a law teacher. It's a, it's the kinds of program that brings, brings the kids through the door, and we want to figure out a way to get them into a regular program. So we don't want to have kids just repeating, you know, the, the high-cost law teacher programs that use the, as a kind of a one-shot deal to bring them into the rest of the program. But to do this, I think it's reasonable to expect a good increase in cost recovery from the community center, the, the, any increase in, in what that cost might be in out years. At the New Hampshire Recreation Center, I think you should work for it, get some cost recovery, or the New Hampshire Avenue, that they can maintain, and, and you do what's at, at the New Hampshire Recreation, to see what that looks like. And then come back and evaluate what's at those at the six-month mark, and make some programming adjustments, and start talking about what we would want to do then, compared to your, to play the recreation. The, the third goal that I listed, and, and, you know, they're not in order of importance, is the support of this, and low-time residents in that, which is one of, one of the concerns when we look at what happens with cost recovery. So the first thing is to develop larger programs to offset the impact of the cost recovery. And I think we're at $9,000 right now, or something close to that, Peter, is that all right?
We don't know. Go ahead. Colleen? All right, it's gone. We, we have... We have her three pages of proposal here, yet it's not anything that we're gonna determine What we need to do going forward is, is have a proposed budget for next week. It sounds like there's, there's been a desire to have a continuing discussion about recreation, but that it doesn't necessarily impact the budget that we need to go forward with next week. Is that a fair summarization?
See. Until, until we hear what the revenue number is, and maybe we do need to discuss it sooner.
Right, right. But it sounds like there's a desire to have a continuing discussion about possible directions that the recreation programs can move in, with some possible changes in, what's the word I want, priorities or goals that the, that the council would like to see, but that in terms of what the city manager needs to do between now and next week, we have our reconciliation list, and we, we don't know where we're gonna end up with that, given that we have a lot of... Colleen, I was just saying that it's, it sounds like the, there's a, maybe, with, with what, you know, we, we all have your three pages, and given the hour and the, the need for the city manager to go forward with the proposed budget for next week for first reading, is there anything that we want to put on the reconciliation list as far as potential, depending on where we end up and, and what the results are from tomorrow in Rockville? It sounds like a lot of this is, is gonna require some more thought, some more conversation. Is there anything that you were proposing, you were saying linking it back to the budget? Is there anything in your proposal that would be a kind of a reconciliation item list, list item?
Where, where did you put it, your last thing you said?
Say it again?
Where was the last thing you heard me say?
I don't know.
You're in, you're in the point three, you're just in the point three. You were just starting to, to talk through goal, your third goal.
Yeah, I think there are things that are relative to reconciliation, unless there's any. So what I would suggest is moving to a cost recovery model with the Recreation Department, and give the city manager a chance to see what that would be. I would recommend that she come back to us with something based on a 50% cost recovery for the areas that I defined within the community center, and put out the New Hampshire Avenue Recreation Center and the, what we might consider non-recoverable, recoverable programs that we want to keep. The other piece, it's in the, I think, we're, the reconciliation is the, is the scholarship fund, that we do this, we need a larger and more aggressive scholarship program. And I don't, so I, you know, I have a toolbox up there, I don't know how that is gonna impact the budget, but it definitely provides a model to move forward with the types of things that council member Stevens was proposing around having, you know, a policy model by the century, and then the other piece that may come into recreation, the recreation budget, should the, should the center council members support it, is identifying some that could do with long-term recruitment and retention, and I think that is also the key factor in the, in communication of this. And if I, if I understand what people said about, I mean, definitely policy discussion, it's definitely a strategic planning discussion, but it pretty instantly ties to the budget also. So those are the things, the scholarship, the recreation position, moving into these cost centers and, and going with the 50%, you know, 50% recovery for the kinds of programs that I mentioned. Does that make, does that make sense to vote?
I would say that it makes a certain amount of sense, but it doesn't make sense to have all that together for next week.
Yeah, I, I would recommend, I would follow councilman Wright's suggestion that we just decouple this from the budget. You know, there's a lot of ideas here, just this three-page document alone has got ideas in it. Staff has not had a chance to read this, therefore they cannot react to it, they're not in a position to. Seems to me that one of the possible outcomes is that if this program that Terry is talking about is successful, it may be counter to the idea of reducing the workforce. In fact, if you get an abundance of new participants and volunteers coming into this program, you know, people paying money and cost recovery and all that, maybe the last thing you want to do is reduce the professional staff. We might end up even having to increase the professional staff. And I, I can't, at this late hour, I can't even begin to digest this sort of thing, and I just don't think it's appropriate for reconciliation. We don't even know, I mean, we, we haven't even heard the specific suggestions as to what positions would be cut and, and for what purpose. I mean, reconciliation, we're supposed to be trying to figure out how we're going to reduce expenses, not, not increase them.
And the purpose of this, is that in fact, we could reduce, we could reduce the expensive product, and then do the cost centers, so that we could, in fact, then use programming that is possible to cover more money on, which is something that we've all been talking about this year, and, and put that out there. I think there's a good manager that has, has an idea.
I'm not really in a position to comment, obviously. All I know is what I've heard this evening. I, you know, I'm sure Mr. Burbank, on behalf of his members, I certainly think the rec staff, who I just told them that they could go, are all wondering whether or not they're going to have jobs. I would remind the council that you have an existing policy on the books, which I would suggest, Mayor, you get on the agenda and void, given tonight's discussion, which is that your goal is you have benefited staff rather than the use of contractors. Based on the discussion this evening, it appears this council's going in a different direction than the one from several years ago that adopted that policy, and I think that would be good for the workforce to know that there has been a shift in the council's thinking. Beyond that, I'm not really sure, council member Clay, I apologize, but I'm not really sure what I'm in a position to say this evening.
Is there something that you mentioned in the proposal, lay off that?
That is not what I believe I heard, and I'm certainly just looking around the room this evening at the department heads who are here in Mr. Burbank's face, I don't think that's how the staff is interpreting the discussion this evening.
Okay, but was the proposal, I think, was not a proposal, lay off that, do you think that's what the...
Councilmember Clay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Clay, I don't think your proposal is one to lay off staff. I would agree with you. I said I did not interpret your proposal as one to lay off staff. I believe the other proposals that were mentioned this evening are to lay off city staff, not yours.
And, and what I would say at this point is that I don't think any of us is in a position to come to a conclusion on any of this tonight, next week, this month, next month.
Yeah, what I, my understanding as far as my direction relative to preparing an ordinance for next week is that the proposed increases in user fees already go on the reconciliation list, and I'm not to change expenditures in the Recreation Department. Is that, so I'd be clear that that's what I'm to do for next week.
I think that's right.
That's correct. Yes.
Did you say?
I just think it's very problematic, maybe this is something that's part of our democracy where we have an open meetings act, which I think is a good thing, but there are going to be times in the state of this city when it is gonna be, require us to confront realities that are hard, and those realities are gonna mean that we're gonna have to examine doing things differently. Terry proposed something different, Colleen proposed something different, they're not the same thing. The reality is that to have those difficult discussions, there's gonna be suggestion, there's gonna be ideas that staffing may change, but if we don't have those discussions, we're never gonna get to a much better groundbreaking solution. And I feel, I feel for staff that feel like their jobs are on the line when those discussions happen, but there's no other way to have the discussion in a democracy that demands open debate.
Councilmember Wright, I propose eliminating the sanitation division both this evening and before, so I myself have done that, and I am the person who recommended to this council that ten city employees either lose their job or have their hours modified. I don't disagree with you that tough decisions have to be made.
Yeah, and, and so I think, but some of that, if you look at something like the recreation, if we're gonna talk about doing it drastically differently, which actually might improve service for residents, it's just a challenging discussion, and I don't want staff to feel like it's a, and maybe this is to you as a representative, that it's about us disliking the staff, we're just trying to find the best solution, and part of that discussion has to be in public, and it's a tough discussion to have because some of the solutions or suggestions may mean that staffing may change. So I think that's just a challenge, and, you know, I, I feel for the staff that have that feeling, because it is their livelihood, but it's also a discussion we have to have to improve things, so.
I agree. It's difficult to have these, these discussions and to have them in public, and I know there's, there's desire at times on the part of the council, gee, can't we do this, some other way to have this discussion, to work through some of these things and think about these things, and the, the answer tends to be, this is the public, public's business, we need to do it in public. And, and so that does have hardships, and it's, it's not easy for employees to hear the discussion, and it's not easy for us sometimes to have that discussion, knowing that. And I, and just to the city manager's point of a minute ago, I know it was very trying for you to put together those recommendations for your proposed budget, I know it was real tough, it was, it was tough for you to make that proposal, it was tough for us to know about it, consider it, given that we know a lot of the city staff who were involved, and just, it's, it's really hard, and that's what we get paid the big bucks for. We're adjourned.